If you're just exhausted and things are more tiring for you right now, then think about doing a potluck. Where you divide the work, you delegate the work, whether it's with your kids or your friends, to, you know, someone brings the dessert, someone does the main course, someone brings... And that ends up being a lot of fun and creates a nice discussion because then you like to share recipes. So, how did you make that? How did you do that?
Well, exactly. And so often, it falls to one person over a period of years, usually grandma, who does everything, and then the kids all show up and enjoy it. But it's nice to take a bit of that load off of grandma this time.
Especially with the financial situation that we're finding ourselves in now. It's really a tough situation. Depends on what the living arrangement is. For a person who lives alone, it's one situation. Versus a person who perhaps is living with older adult children.
Right.
But the thought of going into your refrigerator and saying that because of the economy and because of the situation that you're in now, you just don't have the groceries that you were used to having.
Yes.
Then some of the ideas like Annette is suggesting makes sense. To still have a small gathering and have others contribute.
Right. People bringing things over. And I like that idea because it is such a communal time. And I know it's hard sometimes to get the motivation to get out of bed and do something, but you really have to push yourself. Don't be isolated. It's awkward stuff to be alone on a holiday. I've done that once in my life, never again.
But there's really a lot of also the social pressure because of the commercialization that the holiday, you gotta spend, you gotta all be cheerful and have fun. But you know what? It's really important not to put that pressure on yourself. And do what you can and what you enjoy, and reach out to people. Because we, thank God, we don't live in a vacuum, and we're humans who like to be with people. But if you're having a hard time, reach out and ask for help. There's so many people, whether it's the kids, who say, "Oh, Mom, I'm so glad that now I get to do the holidays." You know, "I've always wanted to do it," but you could bring your favorite recipe.
And for many of our seniors, it's, you can actually talk about a holiday season during the Depression, for example. What did you do when money was tight? Maybe there wasn't any money at all.
Right.
How did you make that little gift? What kind of crafts did you employ? And what was that like?
Right. So you're opening up communication.
Exactly. And that's exactly what I'm thinking. Because people's life circumstances, they change. They, we are all up and down, and it's wonderful to have a great year and be able to share, but you gotta be ready for the downtime as well.
It's not about the grandness of the gifts or how many people you give gifts to. It's really about the simplicity of just being together with people that you care about.
Yes, I agree with that. I know every year we get these hopeful messages. I'm watching "It's a Wonderful Life" as a real spirit booster. It's true, because we all do make a difference in each other's lives. And watching a powerful spiritual message like that is okay. I think it's nice to indulge yourself in the holiday spirit, even if you have to make yourself for the first couple of days.
Because there is a lot of pressure when the holiday season approaches. As we said about the gift giving, not having enough money, about where the gatherings are going to be. If you have someone who has something like dementia, how to help around that. Even letting other family members know about what the situation is with that family member who has dementia, so that they know what to expect. So those things are very important.
Right. And we all need to be alert at this time of year because the messages are so overwhelming in our media and on the radio, that we need to know that for some people, this is going to be a difficult time. Now, it's time for a short break right now. And when we return, we will continue our discussion of Caregiving 101 on surviving the holidays. Please stay tuned. We'll be right back.
You know, honey, I've been thinking. You're not prepared for an earthquake. Take this antique vase your mom got you. If the big one hit, be a goner. Or this clay penguin you made in third grade. History. By simply strapping loose furniture to the wall and putting putty under loose items, you can prevent serious injury and damage. Nothing is safe. Even poor Uncle Peedy. Get the message? Be prepared.
The Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration keeps the city's projects on track. Ensuring safety first and fairness always. From the streets, all the way to the stars.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic on today's program is Caregiver 101 on Surviving the Holiday Blues. Our guests are social workers from the Los Angeles Department of Aging, Annette Lewis and Susie Rodriguez Shapiro. Back to the holidays. It's a time when we're meant to share with one another because there's a lot of emotional content in the holidays. What are some of the tricks or devices that a caregiver or concerned offspring might use to bring mom or dad sort of back into the present? Susie?
Well, to begin with, by checking in with them. No, you don't want to force yourself on them, but you want to make it very authentic, that you really would like them to participate. And if they say, "Well, it's either a financial reason why they can't come," find a way to do it while still allowing them to maintain their dignity. Also, if it's just a matter of, you know, across towns, say, "No, it'd be no problem. I'd love to come over and pick you up." You know, it's really no problem. So making them really feel wanted and welcome is a good thing to do.
And how about anticipating the holidays? You know, maybe calling them, say, "Mom, I found these holiday recipes, and before the crush all begins, I'd like to come over and go through them with you." That's kind of helpful, isn't it?
Absolutely. So planning ahead.
Yes.
You know, and this way, it creates less stress because you know what to expect, you know when you need to go shopping. Other tips that we also like to share is that if you are the caregiver and you're used to doing a lot, but you don't know what to share with your kids, how they could help you, there's a few recommendations. One thing, if there's like light housekeeping or things that need to get fixed in the house, you know, have that as a gift your kids could give you. Say, "You know, son, it would be great if you could come in one day and fix the lights or put in grab bars." Other ideas would be, are there specific days in the week or within a month that you could come and you watch over Dad, and then I could go out for an hour or two? So that's a nice gift.
Right. Yes. We call it respite care.
Exactly.
Taking a break. It's so often true that we don't take that time for ourselves. We have to recognize that this is a stressful time, and we are, we're putting a lot of effort into our caregiving, but it's okay to just stop for a sec.
Right. And as the family caregiver also, you want to make sure that you're not setting yourself up for all of this by thinking that everything can be the way it's been every year. Not all traditions have to be, you know, kept up. You need to make it more manageable, so that everyone does have a good time, including the family caregiver, who's the central one of orchestrating the whole thing.
Right, right.
And getting others to, you know, help out. Sometimes people are wanting to help but don't know where to begin without stepping on the toes of the primary caregiver.
Of course. But there are little things that we do all need to do to make, well, for example, Christmas more green. There are whole new lighting strings now, which really can reduce the size of your electric bill, for example, which would be a welcome gift for many seniors.
True, true. And there are some basic things for the holidays that we should all participate in, like having a good amount of sleep.
Yeah.
Eating the right kind of foods, because alcohol and overeating actually creates more depression. Being active. And active doesn't mean you have to go sign up at the gym, but taking a walk out in the park, getting some sunshine. A lot of us, if we live in states that it's much cooler weather, you know, then you could sit inside where the sun is shining in to get some sun. If you live in beautiful L.A., you know, go outside. Get even just 20 minutes in the morning. Helps with the mood, helps with energizing yourself. And the other thing is that emotional support is reaching out. Call a friend. Go out to meet some people. And if you are in that point where we addressed about depression, and you feel like it's affecting your life, that not getting up, you don't want to get out of the house, reach out for someone. You know, call the doctor, let them do an evaluation to see, is it something medical? Or do you actually need to get some counseling?
Well, now, people can contact the Department of Aging as well, right? If they think, "I've got some concerns here for the holidays." Are there people there who can say, "Look, here's, let's go have a little checklist right now"?
Yes. If you call our Department of Aging, we'd be happy to talk to you and help you determine whether this is something that seems like it does need the help of professionals. Sometimes it could just be, you know, checking through a physical exam to see if the person is, the medications are in balance and such. As older adults, remember that there's many medications that are taken in combination.
Boy.
Now, with the holiday season, alcohol becomes a challenge. And that, you know, between a little bit of wine with this dinner, a little bit of toasting with that, all of a sudden, alcohol can have an interaction that needs to be looked at.
Right. The dreaded eggnog.
The dreaded eggnog, whether it's got a little spike to it or not.
Exactly.
But those things are very important to look at. And perhaps the person may need a little counseling or therapy, maybe a medication for a temporary period, just to get them through this.
Right.
Because regardless of what your faith is and which holidays you celebrate, the commercialization of the holiday season does take everyone in and get everyone anticipatory about the gift buying and the gift giving.
Right. But, you know, I keep returning to this thing of isolation. If you can get out and get with other people, you'll find that they have the similar concerns. They're concerned about whether or not the son or daughter are going to make it across the country, or how much can I spend on gifts, if I can spend on gifts? Being, that feeling of isolation, "I'm the only one going through this," that's just deadly, when it's not true. All of us feel this.
Right. But you won't get the help unless you reach out.
Right.
And there's so much, you know, family members, what they could do if you know that grandma lives away. If you know there's a neighbor across the street who's alone, give them a call.
Right.
It's amazing how just a phone call, just saying hello, could go a long way. And sometimes that's the only phone call that they get for the whole entire holiday. So there's a lot that we can do as caregivers who don't live with our loved one. And there are things that the caregiver who's taking care of a loved one or an older adult who's living home alone, it's to reach out.
Right. And one of the ways you can lessen anxiety is to establish a budget. To limit yourself on how much gift giving you're going to do.
That's right. You know, in the past years, maybe things were more plentiful, and so therefore, people could give grander gifts and give to many more people. But now, it's a time to rethink it and realize what really is important. So the smallest of token gifts that you can give to your daughter, your son who's visiting, is very much appreciated.
Sure, sure it is. And there are gifts, there are legacy gifts. A photograph put in a new frame, something that has a substantial memory value, if you will. Those are very nice gifts.
Yeah. I'll give you an example. My mom took the photo album of myself and all my siblings as children, and she recreated it. She literally just Xeroxed it and repackaged it for each of us. That was so meaningful.
Sure.
And a beautiful gift. Other ideas are the recipes. Those go a long way. Being able to pass down recipes for mom, grandma, you know, the generation. Those get lost. And that's a precious, precious, valuable gift that, you know, you can't put a dollar to.
No, and it really isn't dollar values. Now, I know one of the things we talked about in preparation for this show is finding time to laugh, just at the absurdity of the situation. I mean, you can go on the internet if you have access to it, and there are funny places that, you know, YouTube has funny videos. You can find that joke each day that somehow says, "Don't be so foolish about this." It is, after all, just a certain time of year.
And even when you reminisce about some of the people that are gone now, that, you know, are no longer with you. Just remembering some of those humorous situations or scenarios or episodes that happened, that, again, bring back the memory of the person who's gone and brings, you know, humor to the whole family. It's a little lighter.
Right. And again, this message, spend time with other people. Don't isolate yourself. I know it's hard sometimes to pick up that phone, but that, that's a good way to make contact with people. You don't have to get up from the chair. You can make contact with a live person.
Or go outside. You know, go to your local park, go to your local library. So you are around people, and it's another opportunity to meet people, to make friends. If you're outside, you're in the sunshine, you know, we talked about how important the sun is. But then you'll see other people who are out there, whether they're with children or other seniors who are, you know, sitting on a bench, reading something. It gives you an opportunity to meet, to talk, to socialize.
Right. And especially in Los Angeles, our weather is uniformly good.
Yes.
Get out there. Okay, you gotta put on an extra sweater, but still, if you can get to the park, sure enough, conversation is going to develop.
Right. And you never know who you're going to have the opportunity to meet out there.
Exactly.
You'll make new friends. And your family includes friends.
Yes, it certainly does. I know that, I have seen people who thought they were all alone, and then they've kind of made a list of other people they thought were alone. And those are the people who got together and had the most wonderful holiday ever.
Right. So plan, you know? Make some phone calls, plan ahead, get yourself out there, whether you're going to the senior center, you're going to a local faith-based organization, seeing, you know, what can I do for you? Is there something I could volunteer to do?
Right. See, the truth is, we can get through this together.
Yes.
Now, our time is up for today's program. Thanks so much to our guests, Annette Lewis and Susie Rodriguez Shapiro from our own Los Angeles City Department of Aging. And now, it's time for today's stat shot. Here are some tips on how to avoid the holiday blues. Acknowledge your feelings and seek support. Be realistic about expectations. Set differences aside. Stick to a budget. Focus on healthy habits, eating, sleeping, exercise. Take time out for yourself. Avoid thinking you need to have a hallmark holiday. Create a positive attitude. Keep active, socialize, volunteer, and stay physically active. And find some time to laugh. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and ideas for future programs. So give us a call. The number's there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson. For the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A., thanks so much for watching. We'll see you next time.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for Wednesday, the fourteenth of July, two thousand and ten. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, Room three forty of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten a.m. I want to welcome members of the public who are here today with us. Thank you for being here and taking time out of your day to join us. Also, those who are watching us live in our remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro, which are made available for your convenience if that's closer to where you live. Our meetings are broadcast live on Channel thirty-five, and we welcome our viewers throughout the city's cable system, as well as through the Internet and on the telephone. The Internet, you can go to la-city dot O R G and navigate your way on the links to the left to our live streaming webcast of these council meetings, and any of our past council meetings are archived there for your convenience as well. And the telephone number, if you'd just like to use your phone and listen to the audio proceedings of the council, is two one three six two one city. That's two one three six two one city. I want to thank those council members who are here on time, council members Alacon Cardenas, Corretz, Labange, Perry, Reyes, Smith, and Wesson. Ms. Han is excused, sorry, Mr. Weezer is excused today, and Ms. Han is excused to arrive late, so we're awaiting one of these four late council members, council members Krikorian, Parks, Rosendahl, and Zine. As soon as they're here, we will begin our meeting, and thank you all for your patience while we await for those council members, Krikorian, Parks, Rosendahl, and Zine. This is a final quorum call, council members Krikorian, Parks, Rosendahl, and Zine. If you can please make your way down to council chambers immediately, thank you. We do have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Han Weezer, Corretz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
Shh. If we can please go to first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can please run through the agenda, and colleagues, if I can please direct your attention to the agenda.
First item on the agenda is an ordinance notice for public hearing, and there should be twelve members today. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yeah, let's hold till, we're still waiting Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Zine. Let's hold one on the desk until two of them are here. Next items?
Items two through thirteen are items for which public hearings have been held. Items two and three are commission reappointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold two and three on the desk, and I'd like to call seven special. And Mr. Alacon, did you want to call nine special?
Nine.
Yes, number nine for Mr. Alacon. Are there specials, colleagues?
Let me, let me, let me have four and five, and also nine.
Okay, we have nine special, Mr. Alacon, and we'll add you to that, Mr. Parks, four and five. That leaves us six, eight, and ten through thirteen. Anybody wishing to be heard on six, eight, ten through thirteen? Seven? I got, yeah, I got seven called special. Mr.?
Eight.
Rosendahl? Oh, sorry, eight for Mr. Smith and Mr. Rosendahl?
If, if staff is here on eight, I might be able to resolve it if they come see me.
Okay, we'll, we'll see if we can take that out of order real quick. That leaves us six and ten through thirteen, six and ten through thirteen. If no specials, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items fourteen through twenty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection, those are before us, we'll hold fourteen until we have twelve members. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl? Twenty for Mr. Rosendahl? And do we have cards in the public on?
Yes, there are cards on fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? That leaves us fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one. We'll close those public hearings, and if there's, nobody wishes to be heard from the council, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. If we can, for Mr. Smith, is there staff available for number eight? Just answer a quick question, number eight, what's, which staff would that be, Mr. Smith? Is that G S D, probably? Is there anybody here from G S D on item number eight? I see someone coming forward, if you don't mind coming to the table. Here, real quick. And Mr. Smith, I recognize you for any question you have. Oh, you just want to talk to them privately? Okay, all right, we'll hold it. So let's go to the two commissioners then. Item number two is the first commissioner, and then we'll go back to public comment. And this is for the rent adjustment commission. Mr. Wesson, did you want to?
Mr. President, actually, items two and three are both reappointments to the rent adjustment commission.
Oh, great, why don't we ask both commissioners to come forward here to the table? Mr. Wesson, I'd like to recognize you as Chair of H C D.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members today. Mr. Cardenas and Ms. Perry and I had the pleasure to have discussions with Ms. Leffwitch and Ms., Mr. Ramon. And again, this is a reappointment, and we were just impressed with their vision for the future, their commitment to making the commission a better commission, and their commitment to the city of Los Angeles. So we recommended unanimously that this council approve the reappointments of both commissioners. And again, we thank you for your commitment to the great city of Los Angeles, and we look forward to you serving for the next four years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Ms. Leffwitch, who's been, tell us, how long have you been on this commission?
I believe this is my fifteenth year.
Fifteenth year.
My third year.
Third year. But one of the things I wanted to just thank you for continuing, because this is such an important commission for both landlords and tenants. And the thing that we hear most from the community is a sense that often they think it's one side or the other, but we hear consistently your balance and fairness to where both sides believe they get an adequate and appropriate hearing. And as a resident of Baldwin Vista in the Eighth District, I want to say thank you because we have been very aggressive in trying to make sure that representation on city commissions from the Eighth District are considered seriously, and you've held that position and done a great job. I just want to say thank you, keep up the good work, and we're here to support you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Parks. I appreciate your comments, and I look forward to continuing to serve on the commission, serving the citizens of the Eighth District and the city of Los Angeles, and thank the mayor for this honorable appointment, and I am honored.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to rise and thank Ms. Leffwitch, fifteen years, thank you so much.
Thank you.
But I also want to be opportunistic with this moment, and thank Mr. Moniz as well. I know, as a Cypress Park native, we both grew up in the same neighborhoods, that he sees and understands some of the pressures that I assume you must go through when you're making these assessments. But it's important to have individuals, and I can speak with Mr. Moniz in terms of his contribution to our community over the years, indeed his whole family, and I'm going to brag a little about your family here, and to embarrass you too much, but they have formed a scholarship, they, as a family, are working with youngsters. They've been very focused on getting youngsters into higher education. As a professor or administrator at Cal State Northridge, also works with many young people in advancing their careers. So I just want to take this moment, Mr. Moniz, and thank you, Ms. Leffwitch.
Thank you.
But also the contribution you make to the city, and being able to peel away at the difficulty of the issues and trying to create a balance, and that's so significant for the quality of life of our city. And Mr. Moniz, would you like to share any words with us?
Thank you, Councilman Reyes, and thank you, council people and the mayor of Los Angeles. It is deep, a deep pleasure to work and to serve the city of Los Angeles. There's two type of residents or citizens of LA that I see, those who just live here, but then those who believe in the city. I am one who believes in the greatness of our city and where we can be in the future. And whatever I can do to help achieve that, to become a greater city, I am here to work with the city, with the council, the elected officials.
Again, thank you both for all you do, and good luck to you. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
Very much. We have two great Angelenos, one from Franklin High, but also an all-star next year, and I don't know many people could say this, both Hobart, Brendel Middle School, Los Angeles High, L.A. City College, and L.A. State College. So all LA, all the way. Thank you for your service to Los Angeles, and it's great that you grew up here, have a chance to impact the lives of Angelenos as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
You bet you.
Mr. Alacon?
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Moniz, what college you attended?
Proud alumni of Cal State Northridge, and also a proud alumni of the Educational Opportunity Program, which is a program designed to assist first-generation, college-bound students, so they can achieve the dreams of higher education.
Mr. Moniz comes with a family of dedicated community servants. I went to college with, with Ramon and at Cal State Northridge. Just want to make sure, we, we know all the colleges in Los Angeles. And of course, Paul has been a tremendous advocate for the poor, and we appreciate the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you both for your service and for offering to, to continue in service. And with that, it is time for a vote. So we'll go ahead and, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to take one other item out of order before, actually, if we can take up the ordinance, number one, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And then item twenty, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl for a reward motion, and then we'll go to public comment. So, Mr. Rosendahl, number twenty, is before us. He'd like to come forward.
Good morning, colleagues. Unfortunately, this is not a happy moment for me at this very moment to be speaking before my colleagues here, but on the thirteenth of June, just before two o'clock in the morning, Michael McGuire of Venice--
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl, if I could just pause you. If I could ask everybody to please take their conversations out of the chambers or keep them to a bare minimum, out of respect for the family that is here, and Mr. Rosendahl, and this very important matter. Thank you for being here, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Rosendahl. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the thirteenth of June, just before two a.m., Michael McGuire of Venice was standing on the sidewalk in front of twenty-four sixty-two Loella Avenue, attending a Venice High School after-prom party, when a dark SUV drove by. Without warning or provocation, an occupant of the vehicle fired several shots and then fled from the location, taking the life of Mr. McGuire and grazing another victim who was standing next to him. Michael McGuire was just twenty-one years old. L A P D Pacific Division homicide detectives are attempting to locate witnesses to the senseless and cowardly act, or anyone who could have seen the suspect's vehicle. Accordingly, I'm asking for a unanimous vote on a fifty thousand dollar reward offered for information leading to the arrest of the suspects of this crime. I'm now going to turn it over to lead detective Claudia Casta via, who will give us a few comments, and then also for Michael's father and mother, who are here to say a few words.
Detective?
Good morning. My name's Detective Castre, and I'm the lead detective on this case. And just a few points to add, there were also additional parties on that street, so there was a numerous amount of peds on the street, and we have very little leads as to what the plate or description of the SUV. And when the officers that arrived at the scene of the location, the witnesses on the street had been gone or home, and this is, hopefully, the reward will bring out some of those witnesses at this time. And these are some of the family members that wanted to speak on Michael's behalf as well.
What number would they call? If they wanted to get in contact with you, what number would individuals call?
It's going to be L A P D Pacific Division, three one zero four eight two six three seven zero.
Say it one more time, slower.
It's going to be three one zero four eight two six three seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Detective, and if I could ask his father and mother to come on up.
Sir, sir, I stand before you, torn and broken-hearted fault. I please ask you to grant this money to take this killer off the street. I don't want to see another family go through this. My son was such a good young man, and was so well-loved, and just a beautiful, beautiful young man, and to have his life taken like that at just the age of twenty-one, this is not fair. I please, I beg, I ask that you please grant this money, so he can get this kid off the street. He doesn't deserve to live in our world. I appreciate everything from all of you today. God bless all of you.
And you as well.
God bless you.
Thank you, you too.
Please grant us this.
Thank you. I'd like you to announce the support of this motion.
To pick a vote right now, and thank you to the family.
Thank you so much.
For your courage. Please open the roll.
God bless all of you.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And we'll send that forthwith to the mayor to get that reward out as soon as possible. Thank you again, Mr. Rosendahl and the folks here. We go to public comment right now for, thank you very much. God bless you as well.
God bless you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker for general public comment. Is Dr. Williams here? Uncle Patel is our next speaker. After Mr. Patel will be Davin Corona.
I'd like to apologize for some of the things that I said yesterday, coming in here without knowledge of what was going on, right? I, I would like to apologize to Councilman Rosendahl specifically, and the reason why I call your salaries a capitalistic joke is not because I think a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, and I don't. For, for a lot of Los Angelenos, it is, but you shake hands with people every day that make millions of dollars. You guys sign papers, and all of this doesn't mean anything when, when I'm following that, right? All, all this emotion, all this sadness, we all know the best way to keep crime off the streets is with jobs, right? We need to put people in legitimate jobs. But again, you guys sign contracts of billions of dollars on a regular basis, you know, right? Million-dollar businessmen come in, Austin Buener, we, he's making seven, eight, nine figures, right? He comes in, he takes over. And the reason, again, why I call your hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars salaries a capitalistic joke is because these people give you stacks of papers to sign, and you sign them on the fly. You don't know what they are, right? I have the commissioner, the city of Los Angeles's city treasury report right here, right? You guys got to look at this. That's it. You get a look at it, and then you sign off on it. And these guys, who, again, I don't, I don't consider you guys rich, right? Hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, again, not a lot of money. These billionaires, they are using you as the tool to keep everyone else and everyone else's salaries and criminals on the streets, and, and lowering your salaries is symbolic, right? It's, it's showing that you guys are with the people, as opposed to differentiating yourselves from the people.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Davin Corona is our next speaker. After that is Telmy Perez. Good morning.
Hey, good morning. How's it going, y'all? Davin Corona from Comunidad Presente, how's everyone doing? I'm basically here because we know that rent control reform will be coming up soon. We want it to come up a little sooner. We would like to make sure that once again, we're, we're, or actually, that we're part of the process, because what happened last time at May, on May twenty-first here, when the cops were basically sicked on us, wasn't the greatest thing. I have my little daughter here, who is also here. Until this day, she's still traumatized about coming here, so I have to take basic steps to keep her to come here, and so that she knows that the city does work for her, and when she gets older, like you all have a sign out there, that the, you know, kids are the future of L.A. services, well, she was one that was here, so I also would like to talk about opening up an investigation of what's going on, or what happened May twenty-first. There's not much to say. We want you all to, to really start these reforms soon. I know Wesson is going to start pushing something, and we hope to be in those conversations. And I know we'll be meeting with Eric Garcetti soon, and, and hopefully, we can get some discussion there. So that's it. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Corona. Thank you for coming here. Telmy Perez is our next speaker. After that is Agustina Ramirez. Good morning.
Good morning, folks. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Telmy Perez, and I am a part of Comunidad Presente, and just to give you a quick timeline that you all are aware of, on June twenty-ninth, we came to city council chambers, about five hundred tenants were here, waiting to hear if the council would vote on a moratorium for rent, for rent increases. That didn't happen. We've heard from a couple of the council members. Mr. Alacon, thank you for speaking out on that. Mr. Alarcon, thank you for speaking out on that day about the sadness that happened here in council chambers. Mr. Zine, Mr. Dennis "Bill" Connor Zine, yes, you also spoke out. You said you would do things exactly the same. We don't appreciate that. Mr. Reyes, you doubled back and you changed your vote, which we kind of appreciate, but at the same time, you did vote against voting on the rent increase moratorium. Mr. Perry, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti, we saw-- we went to go visit you on June 29th in Silver Lake, and you then publicly expressed that you did believe that some of the police force had used excessive force. We also know that you spoke to the media and--
Excuse me. The speaker should direct her comments to the council as a whole rather than to individual--
Well, I'm directing my comments to people who are here, to members of the council. So I think that I'm directing it to the council as a whole. So thank you. Several of you also spoke to the media and apologized to the media. Mr. Labange, on June 30th, you approached me personally back here in the back of council chambers, and you apologized to me for the police shutting the door and basically locking us in. But we yet to hear about an investigation into the incidents that occurred on this day, on May 21st. We have not heard anything about an investigation. In fact, Mr. Garcetti, you had granted us a meeting tomorrow, the 15th of July, and then you canceled it. So we're hoping that you will still continue with your promise to us and meet with us because we want to know what's going on with this council and why you haven't taken action.
Thank you. And we will. I'm sorry for rescheduling that. I'm going to Kansas City overnight for the NAACP convention that's coming here next year, but my apologies, and we will make sure that happens. Agustina Ramirez is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Buenos dias. Good morning.
Momentito, okay.
Yo soy la señora Agustina Ramirez. I am Mrs. Agustina Ramirez. Yo estoy aquí, este, con Comunidad Presente. I am here with Comunidad Presente. Yo, Agustina Ramirez, trabajo en costura-- I work sewing in the sewing industry-- --con un sueldo muy bajo. And my salary is very low. Yo me gustaría que se hiciera el control de renta, que lo extendieran más. I would like, if we're going to have a rent control, I would like for the date to be later, to be a moratorium. Y que si se pudiera, no aumentarían las rentas. And if we could, we should freeze the rent increase. Yo como mamá soltera me afecta demasiado. As a single mother, this affects me a lot. Y todavía dan el privilegio a los dueños de casa cuando se está viviendo entre cucarachas, entre ratones, y entre chinchis, y pagando mucha renta. You still grant a privilege to the owners of the properties when we are living surrounded by cockroaches and other kind of insects. Y ahora, si ustedes suben la renta, ¿dónde voy a ir a vivir? Now, if you increase the rent, where am I going to go to live? ¿Les encantaría verme abajo del freeway? Would you like to see me underneath the freeway? Les explico, ustedes que ganan bien. You earn a good salary, and I would like to explain to you-- Que yo pago impuestos. That I pay taxes. Les gustaría, cuando tengo un trabajo digno en costura, les encantaría que verme vivir abajo de un freeway. Now, if I get a dignified job in sewing, would you like to see me living underneath a freeway? Pónganse a pensar que yo les hago toda su ropa de ustedes. Think about this. I saw your clothing.
Thank you. What's your address? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. It's interesting that you had the two reappointments for commissioners for the rent control commission, and yet nobody-- you failed to ask them what their input would be on the discussions you heard these speakers come up and talk about that occurred here in city council chambers, what input they had on the rent increases tied to the cost of living of 3%. Just interesting. And another speaker came up and discussed your salaries. Well, it is outrageous, your salaries. You're the highest-paid councilmembers in this country. You're paid higher than the President of the United States almost. Close, maybe not. Maybe not the president. But you're the highest-paid city representatives in the country. The California legislators are the highest-paid legislators in the country. And it should be brought up because pound for pound, penny for penny, we might as be paying volunteers to do this work because that's where we'd get more out of it. That being said, there was a very interesting article on Saturday, July 10th, in the L.A. Times regarding the DWP and its program to add a ratepayer advocate. And the article went on to state that there are many states that have a ratepayer advocate for the public, that the ratepayer advocate in New Jersey got its utility use as a rebate. And in the story, it goes on to mention one little difference, that those ratepayer advocates in those states deal with private utilities. The DWP is a public utility. And what does that mean? Well, that means the debt is public, but the profit is private. Maybe you should consider a motion that the public is allowed to elect the board of directors for the DWP. That would go a long way towards advocacy.
Thank you, Martin. Haneline is our next speaker, or Hanline, excuse me if I mispronounce it, sir. And then after that will be Walter Bechtel.
Hi, people. Good morning. This is basically for the city attorney. When I came to this county seeking refuge from persecution in San Bernardino, to try to fight whatever it was that my wife had put on me out there, I didn't know that I was going to have the same stuff follow me here. I did not know about the Google, where they said I was a pedophile. If you look up the case, I'm not. I didn't know my employer who I was working for was running an illegal nonprofit. When I went to turn her in, I didn't know she had already started drug charges that started a drug investigation against me that I was never charged. I do not know what is on my Section 8. They won't give me my Section 8 papers. They told me that I could subpoena it, and they still won't give it to me. My desire is only to move out of the Hayward Hotel. I don't wish to move someplace else only to keep having lies, smut, whatever, follow me. I've helped on a number of investigations only to find out that I'm some kind of criminal. I would like to be able to go to the city's attorney's office, like I have been going to the police commission's office, to look into these charges, to find out who started them, and to get them resolved. I'm a good citizen. I've helped, like I said, on other investigations. For someone to be smearing me behind my back, okay, that happens. But let's get it out there now. Let's find out who I offended, and let's get them charged. Is it possible that I can work with the city attorney's office, sir?
See if we can get you a contact there. We're supposed to just listen in public comment under our ground act, but we'll see if we can get you a contact, the city attorney's office. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. After that is Steve Diaz.
I didn't know what I was going to say today until on item 20, the same problem came up that I talked to you guys about already. The state of California needs to re-enumerate its attempted murder law and describe it also in the automobile law that it doesn't matter what the weapon of choice is, it still is, as long as the intention is there to attempt to murder somebody, that that is an attempted murder. Whether or not the murder actually occurred doesn't make any difference. Lately, it has been increasing. A lot of people are literally going out of their way to attempt to murder people in crosswalks. A couple of weeks ago, I was over at the McDonald's on the corner of Central and 7th Street, and the light had clearly turned green, and I was halfway through the crosswalk, and this guy attempted to hit me while I was in the crosswalk. Fortunately, two officers were there to stop him and talk to him, but I don't think that there's any-- I know there isn't much that can be done. There was a couple-- there was a case a month ago, and two people were murdered. And they couldn't put the people for murdering those people in jail for more than seven years because California thinks that if you kill somebody with an automobile, it's not a weapon, a murder weapon. It doesn't make any sense. I mean, is Al Qaeda's making bombs out of cars and using them? It seems to be jurisprudent to understand that an automobile is a murder weapon, and I think that the judges and the law should be informed of that, and the law should be rewritten to state so that that does not exclude an automobile as a murder weapon.
Thank you. Steve Diaz is our next speaker. After that is Jose Aguilar.
Good morning, city council, and I'm glad to hear that we spent this morning talking about what a great city Los Angeles is. I too believe in a great city and the city of Los Angeles, and that's why I am here. That is why over the last five months, we spent day after day bringing tenants to participate in a so-called civic process that never ended up in nothing. And also to be told that we do not vote because of the color of our skin. I hate to tell you guys that, but people who are black and brown do vote. And I also feel that that is one way that we can make Los Angeles a better city, is to stop thinking assumptions about people in our city. Second way to make Los Angeles a great city is for people to acknowledge that they messed up on May 21st. LAPD already was-- already Councilmember Garcetti said that LAPD used excessive force that day. Where is the rest of the leadership around the table? Why are people not saying nothing? Councilmember Kocorian felt that it was important to send out a letter and clarify why he wrote it the way that he did. At least he took a step. Councilmember Alarcon came out in public and actually said what he did and how he was championing the cause of low-income residents. How about the rest of you guys? Do you guys believe in a great city? Where are your actions at and what you're going to do for the people? Because just sitting back there, just not doing nothing is not acceptable. And we also vote, and we can run political campaigns to get people out of office when it comes down to it. So do something about it. Stop just text messaging on your BlackBerries.
Our next speaker is Jose Aguilar.
Hello. I'm Jose Aguilar, and I'm kind of disappointed of this latest DWP rate increase. I am pleased that you have taken a look into providing for a ratepayer's advocate. I do want to let you know, every time you guys raise utility rates on apartment owners, they got to do the same to the renters. They got to raise-- if you raise the water rates, it's got to get passed through to rent on the property renters. They got to pay for the added cost of providing water. And in the end, it basically goes on your head. Now, my main concern is that the DWP board of commissioners are nothing more than compulsive liars. And they have one-man committees that make recommendations to the city council to raise water and power rates without any regard of any due process. I don't know if you find it normal to have one-man committees to do-- the same guy that's doing the audit committee is the same guy that's doing the so-called investment committee. So if there's a conflict of interest there, why would he want to do an audit on the investments that DWP is doing if he's on the same committee? I don't trust the DWP. And me too. You know, like this other guy said, we're going to deal in campaigns. Mr. Ron Kay is doing a clean sweep campaign. And regardless of wherever it goes, it's going to go somewhere. Mr. Labange is one of the targets because of his condescending attitude towards the neighborhood councils. And I'm more than glad to leave my CD14 and pay CD4 a visit during campaign season. So either you start respecting neighborhood councils, you start abiding by the MOU process, which DWP does not follow through on, which is 120-day notice prior to any rate increases, or we'll sue you in election season.
Thank you very much. That will close our general public comment. I did want to say on the record that I've had good conversations with some of the folks who were here for our public comment, that it would be a misrepresentation of my words, didn't say anything close that LAPD had used excessive force. I know there's a legal proceeding right now, and I just wanted to make sure that that was established for the record. Mr. Corretts has a kind of off-the-agenda special message and presentation, if Mr. Corretts would like to now. Since the posting of the agenda, a kitten was found, and under Rule 23(c), or (K), I think it is.
Should be (C) for cat. Well, this is a feline Wednesday unexpectedly, but on the way to work, my scheduler, Tanya Bradkin, found this cat running around the middle of the intersection of Pico and Normandy, narrowly avoiding traffic. So I think we should name it Lucky and find it a good home. This is the cutest kitten I think we've had since we've been doing this. Adorable tabby cat. And if anyone watching or in the chambers or in City Hall wants this adorable kitten, just call my office at 213-473-7005, and you can have them. So here's your chance to get the cutest kitten in City Hall. And this is a great rescue. It's the freshest rescue we'll have had. This cat is right off the street from about an hour ago. So thank you, colleagues, and let's find a home for this one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corretts, and we appreciate you bringing that lost kitten in this morning. Mr. Parks, you're on the speaker queue. Was that for something else? Okay. Like to take up item number nine.
Mr. President, I believe the questions have been answered on item eight.
Okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on eight and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And then I'd like to recognize Mr. Alarcon on--
And, Mr. President, I'm sorry, one more thing. And item 17, there is a request to continue that to July 21st.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing that to the 21st? If not, we'll continue that to 21st, and any cards that we have, we'll make sure stay in that file for that day. Mr. Reyes, I see on the queue. Did you-- okay. Then we'll turn to number nine and Mr. Alarcon, and then Mr. Parks.
Councilmembers, the Jobs and Business Development Committee had the pleasure of having a report presented to us by the Los Angeles County Economic Development Organization. They have developed a report called Los Angeles County Strategic Plan for Economic Development for 2010 to 2014. And we've asked Mr. Bill Allen, who is the executive of that organization, the new Jack Kaiser, if you will--
He's Jack Kaiser's boss. He's been Jack Kaiser's boss for a long time.
--to present his report.
I know Jack Kaiser. He's no Jack Kaiser.
Let me say that Bill, as most of you know, is longstanding community activist in economic development issues, and his family is synonymous with Los Angeles. Of course, his father is Steve Allen, and his mother's Jane Meadows. And so he is continuing the legacy in a different vein in terms of their contributions to Los Angeles. And so I want to say thank you to him for presenting the report. The recommendations out of the report are to support in concept the recommendations contained in the newly released report, Los Angeles County Strategic Plan for Economic Development for 2010, 2014, and instruct the CLA in collaboration with the LAEDC, the Mayor's Office, Community Development Department, Community Redevelopment Agency, airports, harbor, planning, to report back on an implementation and tracking plan that incorporates as many of the recommendations contained in LAEDC's report as may be a benefit to the city of Los Angeles. With that, I'd like to have Mr. Allen report to us directly about the report that they prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alarcon. Council President Garcetti and councilmembers appreciate very much the opportunity and also appreciate very much the attention that this council and the Jobs and Business Development Committee have been paying to the need to create jobs and retain jobs in the city and in the broader region. in the broader region that is the Los Angeles area. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation I'd like to share with you this morning that will explain to you the process we went through and the content of this unprecedented consensus strategic plan for economic development for Los Angeles County and the process by which we're implementing the plan and the opportunity for the city of LA to be a leadership partner with us in the implementation of this plan. I know we all share a strong vision about a strong, diverse, and sustainable economy for our residents and our communities. And we do this recognizing that we have underperformed in job creation throughout Los Angeles County for the past three decades. We've added about 500,000 jobs in the county of Los Angeles, but the city of Los Angeles actually has not added any jobs on a net basis since 1980. The city of Los Angeles actually has less jobs, both private sector and government jobs, when put together, total non-farm jobs in 2010 than it did in 1980. Now, government jobs are up, but private sector jobs are substantially down. And we have in the city today 254,000 people unemployed, part of more than 500,000 who are unemployed across the county. And so the importance of this work cannot be overstated. We got together a group of stakeholders about two years ago as the recession was just beginning to develop because we were concerned about our ability to create jobs in this extraordinary economy that is Los Angeles County. Los Angeles County is the 19th largest economy in the world, if it were a separate nation, $513 billion gross domestic product in this county. And yet, we're not creating enough jobs for our residents. So the design, the mission of this plan was to design and build consensus around the need to implement a comprehensive collaborative plan for economic development that would have triple bottom-line benefits, that would strengthen our economy, improve our environment, and reinvigorate our communities. We wanted to ensure that there was a strong foundation of real, timely, accurate information that would underlie the principles and strategies that would be developed. So we started by surveying 5,000 businesses throughout the county, and 40% of the county's population is the city of Los Angeles, so about 40% of the businesses surveyed were city of Los Angeles businesses. And they told us a number of issues that they were dealing with, whether they were capital issues, workforce issues, land use issues, regulatory issues, infrastructure issues. We then surveyed best practices around the world of what other cities, counties, states were doing to address the concerns of businesses in their communities. We compared some of these ideas with the ideas that were expressed by our own businesses in this area and conducted focus groups to drill down on what priorities small business owners had in the LA area about the help they needed to be able to compete in a 21st-century global economy. It turned out there were five basic areas that we'll touch on briefly this morning that businesses need help on and that we as stakeholders in the community really are responsible for helping them with. We developed a straw man document to initiate public conversations that touched on just some bullet point themes that we wanted, not just our business community, but our labor community, our environmental community, our government community, our education community, and other community-based organizations to discuss and develop consensus somehow. We had many representatives from the city of Los Angeles, many of the departments, including proprietary agencies, the Department of Water and Power, the Port of Los Angeles, LA World Airports, and others participated in the development of this plan and the conversations. Meetings were hosted by the LA County Federation of Labor. Mariana DeRosa hosted meetings at the County Fed Office. Our community colleges hosted meetings. Our National Association of Women Business Owners, our chambers of commerce, councils of government throughout the county. So all over the county, 26 public workshops were held at which more than 1,000 stakeholder organizations came together to develop what is this county's first-ever strategic plan for economic development. And it was unanimously adopted by the County Board of Supervisors on December 22nd of 2009. And it is now underway as a five-year strategic plan guiding the overall direction of these various stakeholder groups so that we come together, not plans put forth by business alone, or by labor alone, or by the environmental community alone, but plans that we all share. And they're around five aspirational goal areas. How do we all work together as the various constituencies of this city and this county to ensure a better educated workforce, to ensure a more business-friendly community, not only our local and state government, but our broader communities? How can we be more enablers of private sector job creation? How do we improve our quality of life, make it more affordable, more attractive? How do we implement wiser land use? We have scarce land resources. We must make wise decisions if we want to create more and better jobs that can help our families and our communities sustain themselves. And we must build a truly 21st-century infrastructure as a foundation for a 21st-century economy. I'll just briefly touch on a few of the key objectives and strategies within the plan. You all should have copies of the full plan with your papers this morning. But I want to highlight a few important points. We must, and I know the city is committed to this, improve basic educational outcomes. In our K through 12 systems, we must work to have better teacher training, smaller schools, more STEM education, more partnerships with our schools, more linkages between our schools and community colleges and other interested stakeholders. We must improve student access to education opportunities. We must improve the engagement of our students and our parents so that they take responsibility for preparing for their own futures. As we make these improvements in basic education, we can return our community colleges and our state universities from the role so many of them are presently playing in remediating the failings of our basic education system and back to the role of preparing people for successful careers in private sector, in government, in the nonprofit community. We need to be specific about the workforce shortages we have. In a city with a quarter million people unemployed, there are still hundreds of jobs we can't fill at two of our largest employers, Northrop Grumman and Boeing. Great employers, 20,000 employees in the county with Northrop, 12,000 with Boeing. Hundreds of jobs they can't fill right now because there's a disconnect between what we're teaching and what is needed in these state-of-the-art 21st-century companies. So we need to fund workforce intermediaries, which I know the city's WIB is doing. We need to integrate our workforce training with higher education and expand our sector-based training because the needs for education in the entertainment industry are very different than in the trade, transportation, and logistics sector, or the aerospace sector, or the apparel sector. And we have to recognize those differences. Finally, in this area, we need to prepare job seekers and incumbent workers to enter sectors with high-value jobs, with good-quality wages, with good-quality benefits, and also export-oriented jobs that bring wealth to our city, to our county, to our region, where people apply their talents and create products and services for which there is a demand all around the world, and resources come here to the city and to the county such that our communities find the opportunities to become more prosperous, our city governments find the revenues they need. As we do that, we will be more successful in the region. Second major area, creating a more business-friendly environment. One of the loudest calls we heard from all sectors is that our state and local governments need to be more proactive and strategic about attracting and retaining and growing the businesses in their communities. We need to educate all of our stakeholders in the communities, not just in government, about the value of private sector businesses as generators of jobs and tax revenue, tax revenue that can help this city balance its budget and provide the municipal services our residents expect from this city. We need to create a sample template for an economic development element. Only 22 of our 88 cities in the county have an economic development element in their general plan. I don't believe the city of LA currently has an economic development element in the general plan. We've been helping the county update theirs, and they're taking that out for public comment, I believe, this summer. But we want to work with the city of Los Angeles and our other cities to develop an economic development element where you decide, as the leaders of this city, with the voices of your community heard, what are the economic development priorities for this city? We want to help government develop more efficient processes and a stronger customer service ethic. What you were doing with the 12-to-2 program, what you were doing with the B-TAC Advisory Committee on Tax Rates in the city, and other efforts that this council and this mayor are making are appropriate, and we need to all support you in those efforts, and we need to be more aggressive about those efforts. We need to be more aggressive about outreach to our present business community that are employing a million and a half people in this city. We need to find out what their needs are because I promise you, they are being visited regularly by representatives of other cities, other counties, other states, and other nations who want the jobs that presently exist in the city of Los Angeles. We have to be out there expressing on behalf of the city, whether it's the council members, the mayor, the city staff, or partners like the LAEDC and other organizations in this city that are partners with you in growing this economy, letting our businesses know that they're important to us. We need to develop a more compelling value proposition for the city and county. We share a brand name. The Los Angeles brand name needs to be marketed more significantly as a great place to do business. And we need to align our local and statewide tax incentive policies with our economic development priorities. As you determine the economic development priorities for the city, align your tax policies to support those, as you're doing with your Business Tax Advisory Commission. We need to develop sector-specific value propositions. Again, the needs of an entertainment company, or aerospace company, or apparel company are quite different, and the approach to those companies needs to be unique. We need to create opportunities for our local firms through international trade, tourism, and foreign direct investment. International trade, the president has a national export initiative to double export activity from American manufacturers in the next five years. Los Angeles County is still the manufacturing capital of America. 390,000 people are employed in manufacturing in LA County, twice as many as are employed in our entertainment industry. We need to be focused on how to help the president achieve his ambitious goals of that export initiative and redouble our efforts, our energies, and the resources provided to assisting small businesses to access international markets. Foreign direct investment, this city celebrated a great win, many of you were there on April 30 when BYD, the great Chinese technology company, announced that it would put its North American headquarters here in downtown Los Angeles. That's an example of the kind of job creation and investment that flows from an active outreach effort on the part of the city. We need to do more of it. And what you're doing with the Valley Economic Development Center and the Goldman Sachs 10,000 Small Business Initiative to ensure greater access to capital to our small businesses is critical. The next area is about, trying to get the slides to advance here, I'm not sure my clicker's advancing, so I'll just go ahead. We need to be focused on our research and development activities in the area. We have an unprecedented collection of world-class research universities here, USC, UCLA, in the city of Los Angeles, Caltech nearby, in the city of Pasadena. We should be working together to ensure even greater research funding to these institutions and the development of a supportive infrastructure that allows us to commercialize the extraordinary work being done at those universities to create new small businesses in our communities. USC recently issued a study that they've launched 24 companies with 500 employees in just the last year or two out of their research labs, but only about half of those companies and jobs remained here in Los Angeles. We need to be focused on how to attract and retain more of those. Quality of life is by and large what we elect you to manage for us. You are our experts on this. You are focused every day on delivering public safety, mobility, environmental quality, affordable housing. We need to look to you in this city to continue to lead and to stretch your leadership in these areas, to ensure that we improve mobility in the region. Businesses are concerned about the ability to move their employees, their goods, their customers through this region. We need to remove any obstacles that stand in the way of creating more housing at all pricing levels so that we can ensure a stable supply of affordable housing at all price points for all members of our community. We need to have healthier living opportunities, more parks, recreation, wellness programs, local food opportunities, more culture and artistic amenities. The creative class that author Richard Florida writes so much about can go anywhere in this world to create business opportunities or to accelerate business opportunities. We need to provide a quality of life second to none so that they will choose Los Angeles over any other great city of the world. And we need to have balanced land use, transportation, economic development, housing, and environmental objectives. We're working on a project that started with the city of Los Angeles. The mayor, and currently comptroller, then member of this council, Wendy Gruel, came to us to start a program called Vision LA in which we incorporated seven other cities, seven business and labor organizations, seven environmental and environmental justice groups who are focused on doing exactly this, balancing these various objectives and coming up with a series of mobility solutions that will have these multiple bottom-line benefits. And we'll come back and talk to you about that if you'll have us in September when we release the extraordinary report that committee is doing. We need to increase our community participation in the planning of the redevelopment of our underserved communities. We need to use all available resources to revitalize these low-income communities and smarter growth principles to integrate housing opportunities, open space, job training, job centers. As you look at South LA, as you look at Jordan Downs and Nickerson Gardens, let's use all available federal, state, local resources, public and private resources, to really turn the fortunes of these communities around. Let's be wiser about our land use. We've talked before to you about industrial land and its paramount importance in lifting people out of poverty and into the middle class in this city. This city is blessed with 8% of its land zoned industrially, but you have converted about 30% of that industrial land over recent decades to non-industrial purposes. You were appropriately accommodating population growth. This city has grown by more than a million people since 1980. And we had to build houses, we had to build schools, we had to build police and fire facilities, parks, libraries. But all too often, we did that on industrial land. And what we were left with was a million more people without a place for a middle-class job. And these industrial parcels are where our motion picture studios are, our manufacturing companies are, our trade and logistics companies that help our port operate and be the economic engine that it is. We want to be a clean tech capital. We will need industrial land to be a clean tech capital. So focusing on what our available inventory is and implementing a preservation policy of these commercial industrial lands and a reinvestment policy. We should look at your own land portfolio, and we know you do that from time to time, both as a council and as different agencies, you look at your own land holdings. We need our federal, state, and local governments to do that because there are parcels that in many cases could be brought to a higher and better use for job creation purposes, either partnering to government entities or public and private entities to create both public and private uses, private sector jobs, government jobs on those sites. We need to be looking at research park opportunities around these world-class research universities. North Carolina was a low-skill, low-wage economy built around tobacco farming, apparel, and furniture. They converted that economy into a high-wage, high-skill economy that is an info-tech economy, a biotech economy, a nanotech economy, increasingly today, a clean-tech economy by building research facilities near their great research universities, Duke, North Carolina, North Carolina State. The legendary Research Triangle in North Carolina grew out of that. We should be doing that same thing around USC and UCLA's various campuses in the city. Developing and rehabilitating these commercial and industrial lands can start with updating our general and community and specific plans. Developing and adopting incentive programs that incentivize people to invest in improving these commercial and industrial land parcels and activities. And creating and promoting public-private partnership opportunities to do infill development and brownfield redevelopment. Finally, collaborating on securing state and federal resources in the way of grants, tax incentives, and zones. The city has gone after a number of important stimulus grants. The city has benefited enormously from Councilmember Kerkorian's leadership in our state legislature with the Film Incentive Program that he created. Just today in the papers, we hear, I believe, Film My Life says filming activity in the city is up 16%. That proves the value of these tax incentive programs. And we just found that 19,200 jobs in this county were created in motion picture and television employment since these film incentives went into place. We need to work together to preserve and grow our enterprise zones. The city expanded the enterprise zones in the San Fernando Valley recently. We need more of these kinds of zones that are incentives to companies to come here and that enable them to compete on a cost basis in an increasingly cost-competitive global economy. And finally, there was a strong consensus from all the participants in labor, environment, business, government, that CEQA is being used by too many people for non-environmental purposes. It's a critically important statute to protect our environment, but when it's used for non-environmental purposes, for anti-competitive business practices or other reasons, it's not serving our interests well. Even the environmental community is concerned about the abuse of the environmental statute. The final area is infrastructure, and this city owns significant infrastructure and has a real leadership opportunity to improve this infrastructure. We've got to focus on some structural problems in the balance between local and regional interests, in our inability at times to access private capital. The state has a $500 billion need for new infrastructure, and only an identified source of about $100 billion. We have a $400 billion gap. You know the city is not going to be able to fill that, the county's not going to be able to fill that, the state's not going to be able to fill that, and the federal government's not going to be able to fill that. We have to find ways of attracting the private capital, literally trillions of dollars of private capital around the world that are being invested in other nations and other states to build the highway systems, public transit systems, airports, seaports, communications network, water and power systems. We need to work that out so that we can access those funds. And we need to advocate for more of our fair share in this region. 3010 is something this city is aggressively advocating, a terrific idea to improve our mobility, to increase our public transit, to accelerate the job creation associated with that. Over the 30-year plan, 500,000 jobs will be associated with Measure R that our own citizens are paying for. 500,000 jobs out of about 17,000 jobs a year for the next 30 years. If we're successful in working together to get 3010 approved and enabled by the federal government, we can triple the number of jobs in each of the next 10 years that will be created in our hardest-hit sector, our construction sector. The priority areas, again, that the consensus reached was the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, Los Angeles Airport, the energy systems and power systems, the transportation systems, waste handling systems, and telecommunications networks. Let me just talk for a moment about the port and the International Airport. These are our gateways to the global economy. The work we're doing around green growth at the ports must be supported by all stakeholders in the community. We must accelerate this activity. LA International Airport, we have a settlement agreement that nobody in this consensus process is talking about changing. There was an agreement of a 70... There was an agreement of a seventy-eight-million-passenger cap. That agreement was reached when we had sixty-eight million passengers going through that airport. Today we're down to about fifty-five million. We're going the wrong direction. We've lost nine international flights to San Francisco since they improved their international airport. Each one of those daily international flights, when looked at over the course of a year, supports six hundred million dollars in our Southern California economy and three thousand one hundred jobs. So that's tens of thousands of jobs and billions of dollars we've lost to the San Francisco area and other airports when we've lost these daily international flights. Your leadership on improving the international airport is critical. Everything you can do as a council to advance and accelerate the work of improving that airport so it moves from nineteenth out of twentieth on the passenger satisfaction index of North American airports up to where it should be in the top ten, top five and eventually number one again, as it was thought of when it was first built, will pay huge dividends in job creation in the region. So with these infrastructure opportunities, we conclude what is in the content of the plan. Now, how do we implement? We need your help. We need our largest city in the county to lead on these initiatives. We've got stakeholder groups from the Unite LA Group, the Public Education Reform Group that was the author of the compact with the L.A. Unified School District to improve our schools. We have the L.A. County Federation of Business bringing together small chambers to meet with the smaller cities throughout the county. We have the Urban Land Institute stepping forward to help us make wiser land use decisions. We have our own infrastructure committee, which includes your harbor director and your airport director and the Metropolitan Transit Authority Director represented there, and they're working with us to accelerate these infrastructure improvements. And our councils of government have volunteered to be implementation champions, improving our quality-of-life initiatives. In fact, our councils of government, representing seventy-four of our eighty-eight cities, that being the gateway cities, South Bay Cities and San Gabriel Valley City councils of government, have unanimously adopted and endorsed this plan. And we're asking and hoping that you today will also endorse this plan and become a partner with us in its implementation. We want all eighty-eight cities in the county working together. And we want you to be able to track our progress. It's our collective progress. We're already working with parts of this city. We should all be tracking our progress together. These are the performance measures by which we'll assess, are we making progress on improving the education of our young people in our workforce? Are we becoming a more business-friendly region? Do we have strategic plans within our cities? Are we adjusting our business tax rates to allow companies to be more competitive in our region? Are we attracting more research investment? Are we commercializing this research to create jobs in our community? Is employment rising? Are wages rising? Is our quality of life improving, our commute times, public safety, air quality, housing affordability? Land use objectives and infrastructure objectives will also be tracked with specific performance measures on the website at LACountyStrategicPlan.com. Finally, there's a growing social media effort developing through modern social media platforms, Twitter, Facebook and others, where people of our communities, both employed and unemployed, are coming to this site saying, how can we help our government leaders, our labor leaders, our business leaders, our education leaders, our community leaders establish Los Angeles City and Los Angeles County as among the most business-friendly regions in the world where businesses will make us their first-choice destination to invest, to create jobs, to create wealth for our region and to create frankly the tax revenues that this city needs to provide the great resources we've come to expect.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
We have, and I want to commend you on your ability not to take a breath during twenty-two minutes of--
I know I was limited in time.
You are very passionate about it and we totally agree with what you're saying, but you definitely have that information and you're doing a great job with it. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Parks. Mr. Alakondi.
I wanted to make one brief comment in closing. Number one, to move the report from the committee, but also to ask that we add the San Fernando Valley COG into the agenda now that that has been formed since the publishing of this report.
Our newest, that was, we had a meeting last week on the San Fernando Valley COG and great representation from the Valley community, so--
And we've asked for the opportunity to present to them and been told it will come very soon.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your analysis and informing us of what's going on around us. But in your opening statement, you said something about job growth seems to be slight outside of the city of Los Angeles and the rest of the county, but in the city of Los Angeles, job growth is down?
Yes, since nineteen eighty, there were, I've got the numbers here, there were a million eight hundred thousand jobs in the city in nineteen eighty, and that's non-farm jobs. That includes government as well as private sector. And there are today only a million six hundred and forty-four thousand. In fact, the latest data that we had from an annual basis was even before the recession fully took hold, there, we had dropped in jobs in the city from a million eight hundred and fifteen thousand to a million seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So there was a loss of jobs in the city at a point where the county had actually added half a million jobs.
Now, what was the difference between the flavor of the jobs that were lost within the city, yet at the same time, what's the flavor of the jobs that were gained outside the city in our region?
We haven't broken that down yet in the detail that I would like to. What we do know is that we have lost higher-paying jobs and replaced them with lower-paying jobs. We've lost a lot of middle-class jobs across the city and county and replaced them with lower-scale retail, tourism jobs, service-sector jobs, as we've lost manufacturing, aerospace, not entire losses of those industries, but seen some significant reductions in those industries. We have seen, by the way, government jobs increased pretty significantly. The city of Los Angeles, I believe, has gone from about eighteen thousand city jobs to forty-eight thousand in that same period, but the private-sector jobs are probably down more than a hundred thousand jobs.
And the reason why that's important for me to understand, because, like you said, did we lose higher-paying jobs and gain lower-paying jobs in the region in and outside the city? And at the same time, what industries seem to be less prevalent today than they were before? I mean, going back to nineteen eighties, a long time ago, that's twenty-five years, that's thirty, thirty years.
Sure.
Yeah, so eighties, nine, yeah, that's thirty years. That's a long time. And also, what is the makeup in the mix between companies that had over a hundred employees, five hundred employees, a thousand employees versus what's the makeup of the people who are employed in environments that are perhaps ten employees, twenty-five employees, fifty employees? In other words, it's small mom-and-pop jobs.
There's no question we've lost the larger employers and been gaining in smaller employers, no question.
Yeah. Because what that speaks to as well, I think it's important for us to understand the tax on the, for example, the county government when it comes to what kind of jobs in the eighties did we have that actually provided by and large healthcare coverage where right now, if you have a lot of smaller companies or what have you, we might have a higher percentage where that's not covered, therefore the burden on the government might be a little bit higher with people using publicly-funded services or what have you, clinics, instead of just going over to Kaiser with their card and saying, you know, "Serve me." So those kinds of things are important as well.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we can get, hopefully, we can get that kind of analysis so that we can understand what's really going on. Because the gross numbers tell a story, but I don't think it tells enough of the story for policymakers like me to understand how we could perhaps can be positive about affecting change.
We agree and we can try and get you more of that information.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Allen, thank you for this report and your time that you spent educating us at Comedian back today. One of the things that we've seen, some of these reports get completed, they go on the shelf, and then several years later, somebody does another report and it just keeps that cycle. We understand you have a commitment to monitor. How would you best advise us as a city to put forth a working schedule, to be working in conjunction with you to see these things come about that the city believes are within their purview?
Thank you, Councilmember. That's a really important point. First of all, we started with this consensus-oriented process to involve more than a thousand stakeholder organizations in the creation of the plan because we knew well that if this was an L.A. EDC plan or a city of L.A. plan, other people might not be willing to partner in its implementation over the long haul. If it came from any one elected official or from any one organization, people might say, well, when he's out of office, we'll have our own plan. So this is in fact a plan that has such an investment from the business, labor, government, education and other communities. We have set up committees that the city is invited to participate in. We have set up a website where we track our progress, individual case studies of successes as well as overall quantifiable numbers. The County of Los Angeles has directed each of its major departments to adopt the appropriate elements of this plan in their operating plans. And there's also that opportunity for the council to direct the various operating departments of the city to look through the plan and determine which parts are most relevant to the city's needs and opportunities. And we would be willing, more than willing, grateful to have the opportunity to work with you and those relevant city departments as we go forward. And there are committees that exist, there can be new committees set up to support the city's approach to this plan.
As we've instructed in our report to ask city departments come back with implementation, but it would appear that from what you're saying, that those departments or some level of city involvement should be part of your committees, your ongoing committees?
Absolutely. And your infrastructure departments already are, the L.A. World Airports and the Port of Los Angeles are involved with us in our infrastructure committee, and the Department of Water and Power is involved with us in a green energy economy committee.
What about the council-controlled departments? Any of those currently participating regularly as part of your committees?
Some of them probably are, but we would invite any and all of them to participate.
Okay. So the thing is, is that, and then you are going to be giving periodic report cards on accomplishments?
We do this through the website. We're regularly, as we get news on new quantifiable data or new success stories, we post it to the website, and we will probably issue an annual report each of the five years of this five-year strategic plan on the success to date.
Now, when you went through this group of a thousand people giving this insight, did you find that there were ordinances or in place that prevented some of these activities go forward? Is there a philosophical issue of changing the attitude? Are there programs that have not been--
I think it's all those things, and I'm not necessarily prepared today to talk about which specific ones, but there were clearly regulatory issues, ordinance issues, there were clearly attitude issues, and there were clearly program issues. As you may know, we have a business-friendly city competition that we run at the L.A. EDC. And to show you the importance of that competition, the city of El Segundo, which was the first winner of that award, has an unemployment rate that is half that of the city of Los Angeles. Being probably the most business-friendly city in L.A. County, they have an unemployment rate less than seven percent, and I believe it's down in the low sixes. And they have programs and ordinances and people devoted to enabling the attraction, retention and growth of businesses in their city. And I think we could help work with the appropriate personnel from this city to look at best practices, not only in our own county but around the country, that the city might want to consider and model. And I know the council's already doing that in a number of different committees, and we would be happy to participate in advising or providing any counsel or input on that as we can. And I think a number of our councils of government want to have these conversations at their meetings as well, sharing best practices amongst our cities.
And I know this was an enormous study, but any evaluation of what's going on in our neighboring counties as relates--
In the neighboring counties.
Did you evaluate any of their business operations compared to L.A. County?
In fact, we looked at the strategic plans. The County of San Diego has a strategic plan, and Orange County has a strategic plan, and the San Jose area on behalf of Silicon Valley and the Bay Area. We looked at a number of others that have strategic plans that are very focused on realizing certain opportunities. This city has shown a lot of leadership in the area of clean technology. There's a clean tech L.A. program involving the city and the universities and key business organizations like ourselves and the Chamber and the L.A. Business Council. The city really needs to take those into a broader set of discussions and say, what more can the city do to become the clean tech capital that it aspires to be? And there are some lessons we can look at from other parts of this state and other parts of the country where they're bringing together public and private resources to achieve those goals. There's a global race to establish clean tech capitals, and there's still time for L.A. to be that, but it's a relatively short window.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Thank you, Ms. Ray.
I just wanted to ask one other question.
One quick one.
So you're saying we have a lot of incremental pieces, but we've not put it into a larger strategy or city program?
Absolutely. We would encourage you to go through that exercise of an economic development element in the general plan or an economic strategy planning process for the city, which we'd be more than happy to participate in because the city should make its own decisions about what its economic development priorities, hopefully in alignment with the broader regional priorities, because we are in a regional economy. A city cannot go it alone without recognizing the interdependence with other cities and unincorporated areas that surround it. But a city should make its own choices about what its priorities are, and we would like to work with you to do that because we think the city has unprecedented levers of opportunity to stimulate its economy if it uses them proactively and strategically.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And before we turn to Councilmember Tom Labonge, Sergeant Arms, we have staff on the side that are having conversations disturbing this chamber. We need to quiet down the chamber one more time. Sergeant Arms, please have staff either go to another area or lower their tone. Thank you very much. Councilmember Tom Labonge.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to say that I met your father on Vine Street, and he was doing a man on the street, and he was so kind. God bless your memory of your mom and your dad and all of your life. Thank you for what you do. This is an important document.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, if I could ask just, Mr. Miller and Mr. Santana, CAO, all this work that was done here is so important. I think a follow-up to Mr. Parks's questions, how could we integrate some of this to our work product? How that we look at this? This is effort. And the point two, members, I believe, I believe there's nineteen and probably more cities that touch the border of Los Angeles. Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, South Pasadena, unincorporated East Los Angeles, the South Los Angeles County, Bell, et cetera, all the way down, Torrance, Long Beach, P., Palace, Verdes and up the coast, et cetera. We're integrated in this message. We have a great county man, a longtime city man at that table, combined with teams of people. How can we integrate this more, if you could answer that question? What's our next steps? Because this is a great report, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm actually very familiar with the work that the CDC has done through my work in the county, and you're right, they provide an excellent blueprint as to how we should proceed forward. Part of the budget instruction that you provide is that we work on a strategic plan for the city. And I think that, you know, as we're starting to look at the framework of what that is and how we ultimately reach the sustainability, financial sustainability, economic development's a critical component of that, both because it creates jobs, but also very frankly because it provides us the revenue so that we can maintain the level of quality services that our constituents deserve to receive. So I think utilizing this report as a framework to integrate an economic development strategy around the strategic plan makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Mr. Miller, I agree.
I would agree, and I think as Mr. Zine indicated, we just recently launched the San Gabriel Valley Coalition of Governments and working cooperatively with surrounding cities out in the valley. And a lot of that focus is going to be on economic development. We have the West Side COG and the South Bay Cities COG also, so we're actively engaged, you know, in regionalism and recognizing that, you know, whether it's provision of housing, which is important for economic development, or other issues, that we do need to work cooperatively. So that is part of the plan.
How could we keep this in front of us? Do we look at something like this on a quarterly report? Or do we, and Mr. Alakondi, you got any ideas on that? Because this is very good work by your committee. Yeah, so if I just say we don't want to, this is, I don't want to see like a great report, nicely printed, good pictures, and not move on it. I want to see have it in front of us. I once suggested before you got here, Mr. Santana, that on the twentieth of October, which is like the twentieth of April, six months apart, that we focus only on infrastructure as we prepare the budgets of that, or at least call some focus to this. So I'll discuss it with my colleagues on the council to see that we keep this in front of us. If you don't execute a plan, you can't get to victory.
That's right.
Newt Rockne, nineteen twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
No, I don't know if he said--
I can't tell Newt Rockne. But first of all, I thank you, Mr. Allen, for your hard work, and I think it is critical that we understand the regional context of our challenges. But I do want to explore a couple of areas. And I only have three minutes, so I'm going to try to be as concise as possible. We would, I think, be remiss if we didn't understand that there is a sub-economy, that there is an economy that speaks to survival for many thousands of people here, whether documented, undocumented, relevant in my mind, what is relevant as they are participating in the economy at one level or another. Did you have any kind of indicators or indices that spoke to that level of activity in the sub-economy? Because in many of our districts, we have folks who are participating. You've got the vendors, you've got folks with the small mom-and-pop shops, you've got jobs being created. Was there anything like that in your study that spoke to that sub-economy and how it impacts the quality of life of the region? Because you see this in Fontana, you see it in various areas where the mainstream might consider undesirable. Can you speak to that?
Sure. We didn't do individual research focused on what some-- We didn't do individual research focused on what some might.
A little closer to the mic.
We didn't do individual research on what some might describe as the underground economy, but the very small business economy we did speak with. The notion here is that this plan is relevant to business owners of any kind, whether you have no employees and you're operating purely on your own, or you have family members as your employees, or you have a very small number of employees. You still have to interface with government. You still have to move your truck, your employees, your customers through this region. You still have to get capital somehow to buy the equipment you need to grow your business. And so all the various ideas of this plan really should speak to that community as well as larger businesses.
Okay. Lastly, I might push my button again, but we speak to smart land use, and you made reference to the industrial land and how it erodes in Los Angeles. Some of our challenges is about answering the question, where will people live? And the parts of the city where there's room for people to live seem to be the most vociferous as to why they don't want more units, why they don't want more people, but yet there's room for them in those parts of town. So the question before you, if we're going to be business-friendly and say we have a housing stock that does allow for a labor force to be punctual, to be rested, to be reliable, they should live closer to their workplace. But the city is really a terror to cities.
Yeah.
Now, I understand the overarching description of what you just laid out, but does it attempt in any way to bring to light those tensions in which perhaps those very scenarios that are saying our quality life is going down, but yet do not allow people to live there? Was that in any way engaged, or is that just too political?
It may be too political, but I think there was some discussion in the process about that. We do believe that people should live closer to their work, and that can be accomplished in two ways. One is by providing additional housing in an area where there's employment, providing additional employment in an area where there's housing, or also reducing commute times. And that's what the Vision L.A. project, which has grown out of this, is attempting to do, is using public and private strategies and a remarkable array of strategies that are being vetted right now by really world-class transportation planners that will actually shorten commute times and allow particularly a transit-dependent population to be closer to job opportunities.
I think what would be a tool, and perhaps another chapter of the study as it evolves, because I'm assuming this is a living document that will continuously change.
Absolutely.
Is that if there was an objective eye that speaks to those parts of the city where people could live because the space allowed it, but you're going to find that the real estate industry, folks concerned with how they perceive the world, are going to say, we know we don't want that. But as an objective marker in looking at strategy for housing, that might allow for a different discourse as opposed to a slugfest, which Sanders' proposal to make, to create change in the city. So as just food for thought.
Absolutely.
And there's other things I'd like to share, but I'm running out of time, and we'll appreciate it one more time.
Appreciate your point. Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Rosendahl, our final speaker.
Yeah. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Councilmember.
Your father was a good friend of mine, and I did a nice show with him called Personal Best. It was a lot of fun.
I remember.
So it's good to see the family resemblance and even the energies.
And we appreciate that recorded history you created of him, so thank you.
That was fun. That was a lot of fun. Here's my big question, okay? My district, which is blessed with the ocean and the mountains and the fresh air, has a little town called Santa Monica. It's got a strip of another little town called Culver City, and I sit on a group that has a little town called Beverly Hills in West Hollywood. They're right in my face, okay? And they have been very smart in creating business-friendly environments. Santa Monica to the degree that I get 200,000 car trips coming through my district every day to go to work in Santa Monica, okay? From all over the place. They didn't create any housing in Santa Monica, but they created the jobs. L.A. and them didn't work together on transportation corridors, so I also have the most gridlocked district in the city. And it's really painful for all of us who happen to live there. What lessons do you learn from Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, West Hollywood, and Culver City, which seem to have their act together far more than the big town does, that we can learn from that and actually find ourselves more competitive with these towns who have better budgets, better services, better opportunities, and all that?
Well, I think there's a number of lessons. One is an attitude of an interface with business. It's a can-do attitude. When businesses come in, and this city has a new First Deputy Mayor in Austin Butner, who has talked to a lot of the staff that reports to him, about saying yes as often as possible when meeting with a business owner, small or large, trying to find ways that the city can accommodate their desire to create private sector jobs in this city. And a number of those cities you mentioned have that, and El Segundo, which is also, I think, adjacent to your district, has that ability to find a way to say yes and help someone create private sector jobs in their community. But you speak to a regionalism question, which is, how do we recognize that we are interdependent communities?
Correct.
And when someone crosses the street and they're in another city?
Yeah.
There are impacts. And that's the point of this strategic plan and also the Vision L.A. project that I mentioned that has grown out of this plan. As we were developing this plan?
Yeah.
People wanted to move forward implementation and said, the questions you're raising needed to be dealt with. And we'll come back to you in September, I think, with some very intriguing answers about how to deal with the traffic congestion in your district.
I look forward to that. It makes a lot of sense. You know, I was a big proponent of Measure R. The people voted yes for Measure R, and now the MTA, in its wisdom, which is the right wisdom, is 30-10 or 10-30, whatever we're saying, basically accelerate all 12 projects during the next 10 years, get federal monies through various strategies there, so that we can literally make a huge dent in our gridlock situation, which means not only jobs, 168,000 jobs right now through construction, but the opportunity for us to get out of the car and get into mass transit and make it more effective. So I look forward to that.
Absolutely. And by the way, the city of Beverly Hills is creating an economic development element in their general plan right now. So I think if this city gets clear about its plan?
Right.
Makes its pricing appropriate to that plan, in other words, adjusts its tax policies and fee policies, devotes sufficient resources to enable private sector job creation, simplify the process by which someone gets a license and a permit to do business or build a business in the area, you can see dramatically improved job creation. The city has a lot of great assets.
And we look forward, as Mr. LaBonde was saying, let's have some clear steps, what we do next. I look forward to your report in September, and thank you for your public service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bill and Mr. Bill. Mr. Reyes, our final speaker, I think.
Thank you. The point I wanted to make, Mr. Allen, is this, is that do you see in this document an opportunity for each council district to provide their perspective based on their activities in their district, what is occurring from an economic development point of view? The reason why I say that, most of these districts are 250,000 to 350,000 in size, the size of most cities, when you look at the 89 cities in Southern California. So when you look at each individual district, there's a specific strategy that fits based on their residential land use pattern, based on the commercial opportunities, based on their infrastructural capacities. For instance, in my district, I have a river corridor. It's no secret I've been working on a river master plan. We're actually reviewing 400 acres of land that's industrial as well as manufacturing, but we're creating three new land use designations that's going to combine these elements into an urban-village concept that's environmentally friendly. That's 400 acres along the river. Now, if we had the ability to shop it around and let folks know that are on the entry, the very base level, that they're looking for these types of opportunities, we can have them land and basically land running as opposed to going through all the stutter steps that costs us time and scares business away. So we're literally at that stage, at least in my district. I know Councilperson Perry has been very aggressive with her economic strategies, and Councilperson Alarcon, I mean, I can go through the whole list. Every council member here, in their land use discussions, when they review the different proposals in committee, have a vision as to how they see these developments fitting in their district. That is something that is not known unless you knock on the door. But this seems to be an opportunity to illustrate it, because every district is almost like a city when you look at its scale. So I'd just like to give your thoughts on that.
Each council district is probably larger than all, but about five or 10 of the 88 cities. So there's no question, these are large enough areas to have their own defined plans. We would urge you to go through that very specific planning process and be very clear with the broader community, especially the business community, about what your goals and initiatives are, and hopefully do it in a consensus-oriented way in your community as we did. Ours is less a report than it is a community coming together and developing a plan. It's not so much a study as it is a call to action to say, we need to be more proactive in these prime areas, education, land use, infrastructure, quality of life, and business friendliness. We need to be more aggressive and more conspicuous about our plans and intentions and more collaborative in our implementation of these. So I think there are absolute opportunities for the council members to lead in their own districts, but there are also opportunities for you to act as a united force citywide on citywide owned assets like the airport, like the ports, like the Department of Water and Power, all of which are significant levers, and your broad citywide policies about planning and business taxes and, you know, other.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for your hard work, putting this out there and allowing for this magnet to exist, and hopefully it'll pull in some good investors.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Allen. This matters now for a vote. Colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Very well, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Items four and five were called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, four and five, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask Joya to come up on four and five. Colleagues, on item four and five are the treasurer's investment reports. Joya, I've asked you to concentrate on the March report, and then if there's anything that's happened subsequently to March that the council needs to be aware of, certainly you can bring them up on those issues.
We do have a card, Mr. Parks.
If we could have public comment first?
Mr. Patel, on number four.
I do have the investment and cash management report right here. You know, you told me I should have more information before I come up, and I went and I got it. I'm looking at it, and this is literally a $6 billion, 63 million, 120,856 dollar document. This is a $6 billion document, right? The amount of money the city invests in companies like these 116 bond issuers, right? 116 bond issuers you guys invest money into, like Coca-Cola, and Nike, and Hubbell, and United Technologies. And even, and in this document, it tells us our rate of return, how much money we are getting in return for our billions of dollars in investment. This is hilarious right here, if it wasn't sad. Half of these bond issuers are giving us less than 1 percent. Now, yield maturity, right? That's what it means, right? How much money they're going to pay us when this investment matures? And half of these companies are getting, giving us less than 1 percent in return on $6 billion? Less than 1 percent. How does that make sense? Why are we investing in this? Why can't we, you know? There are hundreds of different things we could do with this money that would give us more than 1 percent. And on top of that, some of these companies, like what is this one right here? FHLB Discount NT. There's a $9 million par value investment here, and their yield maturity is zero. Zero. Does that mean we're giving them $9 million in bonds and they're not going to give us any money back? Is that what this document means? Pay attention to this stuff. Come on, people, this is going to get a yes vote. You could invest this money in clean tech, you could invest this money in public transportation, you could use this money to buy the convention center so you don't pay $50 million, which is 12 percent a year. You could do a lot of things with this money.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, back to you.
Thank you very much. Joya, once you give us your presentation, and for the public, just to be aware that although this report might be new to some, it's actually created every month of the year, that we get this report that gives us an analysis. Although we bring it to council in lumps of two to three sometime, it's available to the public and certainly through Joya's website and a variety of other things, but it is not a hidden report, nor is it something that we keep from the public or from our city family. So if you could go through the March, particularly in anything that's happened since then.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Parks, Council President, members of the city council, Joya Defore, city treasurer. Significant in our March.
Joya, pull that mic down a little bit.
Significant in our March report is that we gave some activities through May. The Federal Reserve held interest rates study at 0 to a quarter of 1 percent at its April 2010 meeting. Also, in April, we were informed that the city treasury, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, was named the 2010 winner of the Adam Smith Awards in Banking Relationships. And treasury today is an international organization, so again, another opportunity for us to spread the good word about the management and investment of the city's finances. For current information, all of you may have been aware of what's been happening in Europe, and that has reduced the interest rates in the United States as companies did a flight to quality. They still consider the United States a very good investment opportunity, but what that means is that a lot of, that's depressing, the interest rates that we can earn on our portfolio. That being said, we are still tracking to our benchmarks, and we have still relatively little risk, and we were recently confirmed by S&amp;P to retain our AAA rating in our investment portfolio. And with that, I'd like to introduce, some of you may have seen him before, but he is now our new chief investment officer, Tom Morris.
Before he starts, let me ask you, Joya, could you give us a slight overview that we started last fiscal year with a projection, you later came back and said you don't think you're going to make it, and then we had a recovery? Could you kind of give us a view of that issue of the recovery?
Initially, for, we had thought that the general fund would earn approximately $19 million. Then around December, with the interest rate so extremely low, that was revised downward to about 11 and a half million, and, but we ended the year about 15 and a half to 16 million dollars, so there was a slight recovery.
Okay, thank you.
And so, Chief Investment Officer, Tom Morris. Just up to date, Tom.
Good morning, councilmembers. Tom Morris, Chief Investment Officer. Just to add to what the treasurer's comments were in respect to the overall health of the city's portfolio and the economic conditions, on a good note, we ended up with the fiscal year in a positive tone with the bench, by the portfolio exceeding the benchmark returns by approximately 40 basis points, or roughly 10, 10-plus million dollars. However, going forward, with the weak economy, we anticipate rates to remain relatively low, and therefore will have a lower rate of return as compared to this past fiscal year that's just ended.
Joya, also, would you comment on, I believe in your April report, you gave us some information about the FDIC board and what they did as far as extending the guarantee. Could you give us a little brief on what that is?
During the fiscal meltdown, the federal insurance on an individual account was $100,000. As an attempt to instill some confidence in the depository institutions, the FDIC raised that amount to $250,000 per individual account, and they have recently extended that $250,000 insurance protection, I believe through the end of this year.
Yes. Okay, and then also there's some changes and impacts from the SEC as relates some to new rules that impacts our operation?
There have been many, I don't recall.
You're talking about asset-backed securities?
Oh, the SEC and the financial sort of transparency push has dictated some new rules for asset-backed securities. The feds have had a number of new institute, new rules that they're recommending. Asset-backed securities are something that we're allowed to invest in, but we do so on a limited basis, just because of the relative risk involved.
Okay. I know that congratulate you and your operations. This is a second major award that your department has received. Maybe you should tell us how many. It's the second in the last couple of months?
Yes, the second in the last few months. In the last about 18 months, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we have won four awards.
Okay.
All from private sector organizations, which we try to just adopt best practice All from private sector organizations, which we try to just adopt best practices overall, not best government practices, but best financial practices. The one that was most significant and, as compared to this one, was the 2009 Grand Prize Pinnacle Award from the Association for Financial Professionals, and in that competition, we beat out Microsoft and General Electric.
Okay, and colleagues, this may be Joya's last meeting before us. She's been selected to be the CFO of Atlanta, and she'll be leaving as of July 30th, and she has family in Atlanta, but if I understand her new job, it's a combination of what we call the CAO, Department of Finance, and the Treasurer, is all under a CFO position.
And controllers.
And controller.
And CLA.
Yes, and CLA. So, they call it the CFO of Atlanta, and so, I've gotten three or four calls from their local congress, uh, council leaders, are looking forward to her coming to take over that job. And so, I want to say thank you, and certainly, you've done a wonderful job at the Treasurer.
Thank you, Councilmember, and if I could just express my thanks to the council, and I've worked now for three years, but, you know, someone who is unsung, and I really want to thank, and there are very few of them here, but some of you may know that I've had some threats during, out my nine and a half years, so I'd like to express some thanks, special thanks to the General Services Police Department, who have provided protection for me, and so I do appreciate that, but I really appreciate the leadership of the council and those of you who have been very, very supportive for what I've tried to do. I've tried to put the city in the best possible light, and sometimes being a Treasurer means saying no, so for those of you who understood that, I appreciate it, and for those of you who didn't understand it, I appreciate that too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kardas.
It's also, I'd like to thank you once again for all the wonderful work you've done. Thank you, Bernard, for reminding us that Joya is going to be leaving. It's our loss, but their gain, certainly. One of the things that I've been able to share with Joya is to be able to listen to a lot of her great ideas, and some of them, the City of Los Angeles actually implemented, and to the idea, we benefited from every single one of them, so thank you very much for your expertise and your dedication, your professionalism, but at the same time, I'd like to thank you for being the kind of manager that we need in every aspect. I remember one time, we're sitting in my office, and you were talking about an idea, and then at the end of it, I said, "It's wonderful, we should do this." And I told you, "Well, maybe I'll talk to Bernard Parks, and between him and I, we'll kind of run point or what have you, because they might want to shoot the messenger." And you cut me off, and you said, "I'm not worried about that. I know what we're doing, I know it's the right thing, and I believe that since I came up with it, that's okay, there's no need for you to worry about that, I'll handle it." I thought that was very professional of you, and it was very unselfish of you to realize that even though you might take some fire or what have you, you believed in what you were doing, you knew it was good for the City of Los Angeles and the people of Los Angeles, and you were believed to do what it took in order to just speak the truth. Now, if people didn't like it, well, then, then they don't like it, but at the same time, you knew what you stood for, you knew what you were standing for, and you were willing to take the bullets if that was going to come your way. So, I just wanted to say to those managers who are listening, when you believe in something, you know you're right or what have you, you should be willing and able to go ahead and stand up for that and not be afraid, especially when you have perhaps a council member or two who agree with you and who are willing to go down that road with you. So, thank you very much. I thought it just showed the utmost professionalism, and also, it showed that you cared more about doing what's right than about yourself when it came to whether or not somebody didn't like the idea. It was a wonderful idea. Unfortunately, we haven't got there yet, but maybe in your absence, some of us will take up the mantle and we'll still get it done. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. LeBange.
I just wanted to rise, Joya, to thank you, all the effort that you made, and I'm proud of you that you got selected to such an important role at another great city in America, and I know it's closer to home and all of that, and thank you for your service to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
All right, there are no further speakers in the queue. I'd like to also say thank you for your service and good luck in your new position. Mr. Clerk, is there an action to be taken on this item?
Yes, Madam President, a vote is required. It's items four and five, they're Budget and Finance Committee reports.
All right, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item will be item number seven.
Called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, we also have some cards, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Sorry?
We have two cards.
Okay, sure, be happy to reopen public hearing for this, and then I'll make a couple of comments.
Um, do you want me to go first?
Well, I'll make comments and I'll hand it over to you. Okay. Thank you, colleagues. Today, this is another step forward in our efforts to establish an Office of Economic Impact. This was something that the business community and others have brought to our attention up in San Francisco, that worked very well, that was a real model, to be able to give us as policymakers, you know, we always do budgetary analysis on anything that's before us, the CAO provides, what's the impact of a given policy on our budget. One thing we don't have is, is an office that exclusively with economists is able to analyze for all of us, what is the economic impact of a given project going to be. We sometimes have some analyses from individual departments, which have been good, but there's inconsistencies, it's not the same place, and this gives the people of Los Angeles a greater transparency, greater openness, and the ability to see that somebody who doesn't have a dog in the hunt, as it were, on given policies or different development projects can say, "Hey, this is worth your money," or "This isn't worth your money, this is how much you're going to get out of this, what we project, this is the amount of economic activity," whether that's a development project, whether it is a policy that we have, this would provide that. Now, in time of budgetary troubles, we don't have a lot of new money, in fact, it's quite the opposite, we have had to make dramatic cuts throughout the city. That said, I decided to use some of the money that I had access to from AB 1290 to fund this first year and to move it forward. Our city continues to face some tough economic times, unemployment's at 13.4%, and we want to continue to work people, to get people back to work, and so I'm very extremely pleased to move forward today to create an Office of Economic Analysis that will be overseen by our CAO, to provide real economic data on city legislation and policy, and I want to thank the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce, Matt Toledo, Gary Tobin, their entire chamber staff, Sam and Beverly, I know Beverly's here as well, and their team bought us this idea together with VICA and BizFed. I also want to thank Councilmember Smith for his unwavering support of economic recovery, and I urge your support for this today, it's supporting this with a quarter million dollars of AB 1290 funds, and this program will enable the CAO to develop a team of qualified economists, and I think they'll provide their worth over a very short period of time when we have information, and Mr. LeBange said, that leads to knowledge and that leads to power, and that should be used for positive votes and for informed votes and ones that the public can see as well. So, I urge your support today, and I thank everybody for their good work on it, and I'd be happy to hear the two public speaker cards reopened.
All right, great, well, there's only three of them. Mr. Arnold Sachs is our first speaker, and while Mr. Sachs is coming up, Beverly Kenworthy and Ann Williams will follow him. So, Ms. Kenworthy and Ms. Williams will be after Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. It's very interesting you established this new office regarding some comments I made earlier about the, the--
This is for good and not evil.
--for the utility. The head of the utilities office, the butler, said he wants to budget $300,000 for that positions, and somebody was quoted as saying, "300,000 dollars, you can't get much for 300,000 dollars, so you'll get even less for a quarter of a million." You've just had a gentleman here from the Economic Development Corporation put on a 45-minute display for you about things that could be done and things that, programs they have, and all, all kinds of incentives that need to be worked on, and the fact that you don't really take Councilman Parks to talk, what can we do to implement some of your suggestions into what we want to do in the city? So, here's a organization that's doing work, and you're not implementing their suggestions or not looking them over, you're going to form your own economic commission. Doesn't make sense. And this is also reminds me of the wonderful work they're going to do at the airport. They're going to make administrators for the volunteers that work there, a program that's been in effect for 60 years, are now going to have city administrators that are going to help save money. But how does creating positions save money? Well, it's not general fund money that's going to be spent, it's airport money, or this is some other trust money, or this is another fund money that might be spent somewhere else. Doing leadership from behind, we've seen this play, we've seen this game, it's a constant routine of the City Council. Thank you.
Ms. Kenworthy.
Good afternoon, Beverly Kenworthy, with the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. We'd like to thank the council for their support on this great idea, and for Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Smith for championing this and finding the initial funding. The chamber remains committed to this idea and to, you know, move this forward, and we also are very appreciative of the work that the CAO has done and helping us get this started, so again, thank you very much.
Ms. Samuel.
Good afternoon, I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. We're encouraged that the City Council is beginning to acknowledge the cumulative effect of proposed policies on business traction and retention in Los Angeles, and we thank Councilmember Garcetti for his leadership on this issue. As this effort gets off the ground, it's critical that the Office of Economic Analysis be launched in a way that is consistent with its stated intent. The Garcetti-Smith motion asks for recommendations about where to locate the new office to ensure independence and objectivity. But we do not disagree with the recommendation to house the office in the CAO's office, it is imperative that the panel of qualified consultants who will perform the requested analyses are independent and not ideologically biased against the business community. We hope the city's selected vendors will consist only of the most fair-minded and reputable in the industry, so that this important effort on behalf of the business community does not miss its intended target. Thank you.
Mr. Alacon.
It's cool of you to hire money out of the do-over to be a public speaker. Councilmembers, this is something that has been, that is well overdue, but, and so I support it completely. Just wanted to add a friendly amendment to have the CAO report to Jobs Committee quarterly until we get this thing going. They're supposed to report back in a year, just want to make sure we're on the same track and everybody's moving forward on this, so that in a year, we'll have something very substantive to report. I offer that as a friendly amendment.
Second, sir. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
I just want to thank Mr. Garcetti for coming up with the money for this. It was a brave move on your part to actually give him your own money to get this as a citywide project, and I think it's an important one, we've talked to the chamber for this a long time, and it's a step forward toward what would become, we hope, a department of economic development. We are a city of 4 million people, I know cities in this county, this county, they have 100,000 people, have their own economic development department, and we don't have one. It is unconscionable that the city, the second-largest city in America, does not have a coordinated economic development department, so this is obviously not the time to create that. I'm not promoting that today, but it is a step forward toward that. We brought that motion in, the Chamber of Commerce supported that some time ago, we need to move in that direction, and this is a big step in that direction, and I hope that after I've left this chamber, which is less than a year from now, that we will begin looking, I'm not counting days, no, not yet. Richard's counting days. Thank God. But that we will then have the footwork set up for that, and someday, we will actually be able to say that we have an economic development department, so we can compete in a world economy in bringing business and jobs to this city. So, thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, for stepping forward with the money, and thank you, Mr. CAO, for getting this reported. Thanks.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. He's not starting the wave, is he? I think, no, but, I, I did want to ask some of the mechanics of this. We have varying degrees of activity occurring in our districts, some of us are more aggressive in how we bring in affordable housing, mixed income, and the question is always, how does it, how do we translate the community benefit? And how much is enough for an investor to participate in their return? Those are very subjective questions. Will this office be in a position to give us those sets of answers? I mean, mechanically, how do we, how do we see this?
Well, once, once this office is established, the process starts with the council. So, the, the direction to analyze a specific proposal or specific piece of legislation will come from you, and so, the issues will, the, those inherent conflicts that may occur based on a different perspective on that issue will naturally surface among the discussion in the council. So, what I imagine would happen is that once some of those issues are reconciled and there's a framework, then that gets sent back to us, and we'll work with the CLA to establish a framework that reflects back what it is that you're asking that analysis to be, and then we would then go to the pool of economists that we have, that we have identified through an RFQ process, and identify the best one that could address that, those set of issues in the most objective manner. And that's one of the primary reasons why we felt it was important that we use outside consultants and economists to do that analysis. Then they would submit a report, and we would work with the CLA to sort of identify those issues and report back to your council. So, it doesn't exempt, you know, I think what it allows for is for, you know, an outside perspective on these issues, and to really lay out what those issues are, you know, enumerate them, and then to allow your body to make the best decision following that process.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to that. I think it's important to note that, I think what you're going to see here is a more holistic, more comprehensive approach to, to assess any economic impacts of some of your decisions. Now, on an individual basis, you regularly see economic impacts on major projects, job creation, revenue creation, et cetera, so you'll continue to see those as they're going through, whether they're coming from the CRA, or whether there's Section 108 loan, those types of things that always have that analysis. So, this is an opportunity to really broaden the focus on, and recognizing that there are other impacts of, economic impacts of your decisions.
I think one of the tools we will, that we need in this toolbox, is not expertise that gives us a perspective of the value of our own land here in the city. If we're going to expand the general fund pie, there's so much that we control that is of land use, and so when we look at the trends that are possible, and we're seeing it happen in different pockets in the city, but we are re-entitling land that's owned by the city or other government, and then we're monetizing the airspace, the air rights, and in monetizing it, we have to extrapolate what is the nexus between the private gain and the public benefit, and that skillset is a very special one.
Right.
Because we have to understand not only the cash flow, the performer, but also the impact of the value of that land in its physical form and its monetary form. So, I would urge that we have that level of expertise in this unit. I'm not sure if it exists today, I've had a hard time finding it, I've been doing it through other processes, but that's a skillset I would hope we could have, because I think it effectuate some great opportunities for us as a city. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a quick comment, obviously, the devil will be in the details in what you bring back to us as to how effective it can be. Joe Chiswick suggested this to me, the new incoming chair, and Mr. Garcetti moved rather quickly on it, which is great. Independence, first answer that. Everybody says to me, "It's got to be independent, independent, it's got to think for itself, it can't be overly politicized or bureaucratized." Give me a comfort level on that.
Again, I think that's, the principal reason to, to use outside economists is for that purpose, is to have people trained whose entire discipline is in economics and to look at these issues on an ongoing basis, to provide us that independent review. Their report will stand on its own, our job will to be to make sure that it addresses all the concerns and issues that you have raised, and that there's, that there's, that they have met those targets, but they, I, what I envision is that they would actually, you know, if the issue were to come up, would actually provide, be present to provide an analysis of some of their findings as well. So, I think that component is, is met through the independent economist.
Okay, and just for clarity, you know, there are many economists, I have an undergraduate degree in pre-gosience and economics, and you can all have different points of views, you can see the numbers differently, and so it's not necessarily the kind of science-like rocket scientist, so we have to be real careful how much we appreciate or not appreciate various economists. But the bottom line is, we want an independent voice that helps us go through what we need to go through to be effective as a city, but we can never lose sight of the fact that an economist, if we take a suspect, can put 100 in the-- an economist, if we take a suspect, to put 100 in the room, we get 2,000 different points of views. But I look forward to that independent analysis. Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. On this issue, I was just going to ask, because we're going to have a number of these types of analysis, that when you go out for your bench, that we get as broad a segment of people possible, because I think somewhere down the line, I envision that possibly a lot of the things that are coming out of BTAC and through the jobs could eventually end up being asked for that kind of analysis. And what I would like to see, that we not have these things staggered to where we're doing one group one way and have another group doing something or having an odd RFP out by itself, because we're going to define money for each and every one of them. It might as well get centralized and a sense of people that are on the bench can go the entire gamut of those kinds of studies. And I think it's something that we've been probably needed for a number of years. We've done some of it, but not nearly what I think the depth of this is going to be. But it is important that we understand the intended and the unintended consequences of our decisions beforehand, because we can certainly put ourselves in a bind, or we could also have, as we've seen, people take credit for things occurring that may not be the issue in the sense of happening. We hear constantly, and it was brought up in jobs yesterday, that the original BTAC believes that they're responsible for the significant increase in business tax after we did the reform. And we could probably go back and find there's probably about no less than 100 things that cause business tax to go up, not one singular issue. And so, these are things I think would give us much more of a base to talk about on accurate information, and we're all speaking from the same level of understanding. So, I would just ask, as you go forward, and I know there's probably segments or specialties, but that we get the broadest bench that we can, that we can use it for every type of analysis that we need, so that it's in place, and then we're not starting all over each time somebody comes up with a new issue to be analyzed.
Understood. Mr. LaBonge?
Just a couple of questions. Some of the 88 cities in the county, you know, they have strategies like auto centers or retail centers. Is that something that you'd be looking at in this office of economic analysis? I mean, that's there, or you look at what Burbank did. Burbank took Lockheed Airfield and Skunk Works and transformed it into a shopping center. Just maybe Mr. Garcetti.
Right now, I think its mission is not to do kind of strategic economic analysis, but more we have particular things before us, before we vote, to analyze what's the economic impact. I'd be happy to see that grow, you know, this is a small amount of money. I think that's what Mr. Smith, and certainly a vision that I've supported over the years, that interestingly came from both business and from kind of progressive community at the same time, saying we should consolidate our economic analysis. But no, it's not going to give us reports kind of like what we heard from LAEDC or saying we should look here. It's going to say, here's a project, or here's a policy that someone proposed. By the way, this is what we think as economists, the economic impact on our economy is going to be. So, it's going to be more tailored.
Well, and in your district in particular, over the years, your focus and commitment to public safety caused the economic enterprises of Hollywood, which transformed Hollywood into what was not a place that someone chose, but now it's a place that they absolutely choose.
Yep.
Is that still outside what you're looking at?
On a case-by-case basis, it would collectively, it would have analyzed, for instance, some of those individual projects. We've all seen projects come through here, and they all have the promise that they're going to do something good, but nobody, we kind of go on faith, and some of them don't pan out. You know, they've been losers, and other ones have been huge winners, and the idea is to help us beforehand. But you're right about Hollywood. I think Mr. Zion gets his suits there now at the Hollywood Suit Outlet, and he never would have shopped there before.
Never would have shopped there before. The other thing I want to remember from a CIO standpoint, I know this year sometimes you talk about it, I just want to articulate that. We talk about all the traffic tickets that we give and all the parking tickets that we give. That should not be our interest in trying to create an economic, and I saw that in Governing Magazine when they talked about fines and how to be very aggressive. I think we should be fair with the people that we represent, but not aggressive to the point where it's over the top of that issue there and try to be balanced out. I did visit 221 Figueroa recently, and there was a clerk for the fire department there who had a big, 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 big bundle of return letters that we got, all from ambulance billing. And those people who got those returned will not be able to pay for it. I don't think we should look at that. So, I think this is, I just wanted to make those voices out here to that. I think it's important, look at this here, and if you go back in this chamber here to when it was first being occupied, when they talked about developing and further developing water and power, further developing the Port of Los Angeles, further developing Los Angeles International Airport, which is the gateway to the economics of Southern California, those are very concrete things that really are in the foundation of our city. And of the other 88 cities, many of them breed off that. Mr. Rosendahl was talking about Santa Monica and Culver City and all that. I'm sure all those people in Culver City who are eating in those restaurants along Washington Boulevard don't all live in Culver City. And I know all those catering trucks that are in Culver City are only there for 15 minutes because that's all catering trucks are allowed in Culver City. That's another story. But all this needs to be discussed as we look at this, and I think it's so important. If we're going to get out of this dark cloud there, and we, again, to return to the basics, the basics of what establishes a city for the good of the people and the economics of it, and the tax base and the jobs that need to be there in our communities and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. Mr. Alakon?
Yes, I was curious. I met with a company that was deeply concerned about the increase to their DWP rates, and so a major company, and it could cause them to either shut down or reduce their investment in fuel-efficient energy sources. And I was wondering if the, if your reach in the economic analysis could extend to DWP decisions. The issue in this particular case would be if a company, they might want to get into cogeneration, but if they come off the grid, DWP wants to get a return. Had a lot of these discussions in Sacramento, and at some point, there's, it's a breakpoint where they either decide to stay on the grid, and if they stay on the grid, it could, they could literally go out of business, or they could get into some kind of cogeneration system and reduce the cost of energy, but also produce cleaner energy and stay in business. But they felt they had nobody to go to in DWP who was listening to their concern because they didn't have an economic development office. So, would the, maybe Mr. Garcetti can answer this. I hope you heard my question. But would the DWP be under the purview of this economic analysis group? Not under the purview of, but would they be able to study issues related to DWP as well?
I think that it's, you're, you as a member could certainly ask, as you were considering the rate increase, is for this office to review the economic impact of that rate increase. So, if the process starts with you, so...
Does that mean I have to come up with $250,000 to get that done, or?
Once we run out of 250, we'll have to find the money to do it, but...
I think you already ran out of it.
Yeah, but I think that the way it's envisioned is that if you have a specific proposal before you, like the rate increase, if the council was interested in understanding from an economic perspective, what's the economic impact to the larger community if you increase that rate, then this would be the office that would be able to do that kind of analysis.
Okay, that's the broad picture. I was speaking more specifically. There was a customer that, and DWP negotiates rates with large customers, right? Don't they, do they still negotiate the rates? For large, I was under the impression DWP had the ability to be flexible on some of the rates for the larger, based on economic analysis, that they could lower the rates. In this particular case, it was going in reverse, and it was having a negative impact on a company that had tens of thousands of jobs, and it's not even in my district. But the question that I'm asking is, could they, could this office do an analysis of that particular situation?
Well, again, I think as Mr. Santana said, the concept, at least initially, to get it started, would be that this body would determine what it wanted the economic analysis done on. Now, what will be released, hopefully very shortly, is a joint report from our office that goes towards establishing an actual centralized economic development office in the city. That'll have to be done by steps, but that office is where we envision the types of analysis that you're looking at. That would be the place to go to say, I can't afford this, we need to do something. And they would be more proactive in developing an economic development approach to these issues. But initially, it would be in response to proposals that are before you.
So, it might not specify the particular company I'm talking about, but it may look at the issue of cogeneration and how we might reduce the burden of energy costs and move forward with more alternative fuel capacity.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
To clarify on that point, I think if it makes it easier for people to wrap their heads around it, I think the best thing for capacity is not that we're taking this as an Office of Economic Analysis for new ideas. It's when we have ideas, before we vote, they will analyze. So, if there's a specific piece of legislation or a motion that we have on a particular business and DWP, and that's defined, then they can analyze it. But I think capacity-wise, we could have them working all year long and never analyze any things we vote on if we give them two big projects, for instance. What we want is the things that we already will do as part of our legislative agendas. When it comes here, it gets that analysis.
All right, this matter is now be forced for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 14, call special for cards.
Number 14, Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs.
Thank you again, Arnold Sachs. Good afternoon. You might have read and heard recently about the Controller in uncovering her, doing her daily snooping uncovered the fact that the city is paid, owed hundreds of millions of dollars in uncollected debts from tickets. And I was wondering how much of that uncollected debt that the city is owed refers to ambulance fees that hasn't been collected? Because I'm sure that part of that outstanding debt is ambulance fees that haven't been collected. So, while you're deciding to increase the cost for transportation in an ambulance, have you in any way decided on a method to try to collect on some of these fees that will be increased but won't be collected? And you'll be right back at square one, and so in two years, the Controller can report that hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of fees haven't been collected, and part of it is traffic tickets and part of it is ambulatory fees. So, here it is in front of you. You're going to raise the fees, but you're not going to enact any kind of method to collect those fees, which will leave the dog, the tail wagging the dog. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mr. Patel?
I had filled out a card on item number eight. I guess it got lost.
I guess it did. I didn't see it.
For the record, it already had a public hearing.
Okay, eight had a public hearing, that's why. Go ahead, sir, on this matter.
And so, this is non-ambulatory passenger vehicle service, right? Now, the way these things are worded could mean access paratransit or disabled people this way or that way needing to get to here or there.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make the, no one's paying attention anyway.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to answer the question that was asked, what's his name? Your question, see, he's talking, he blames us for it. I was going to, your question, sir, about ambulance billing is next Tuesday, and this council is a whole new system of billing, and it was approved, was sent forward yesterday from the committee. So, to your question, yes, we have a new automated billing system, outside vendors, and that's up next Tuesday, so that will be taken care of.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Smith. On that, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 16, called special for cards.
Number 16, Arnold Sachs, number 16. That will be our final matter for today. Mr. Sachs, you have one minute on number 16.
Thank you. Automated billing is not the same as automated collecting. Item 16, I'm just concerned about the exclusive negotiation agreements. The CRA is exclusive negotiation agreement, and the CRA involved with exclusive negotiation agreements. There's enough clouds over the CRA that when they get involved in exclusive negotiation agreements, that should automatically raise red flags for the public, exclusive negotiation agreements. But in addition, why, why is, was there, was there a request for proposals on these properties? Was this open billing? Exclusive negotiation agreements are bane to open and transparent government.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Cardinals? Mr. Cardinals, do you have any questions on this matter? There's no speakers. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Very well. Next item, please. 14 ayes, thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one, and the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
And special one is by Ms. Perry?
Ms. Perry.
Ms. Perry, special one, please.
One, okay.
Special one.
Yeah, got it right here. After speaking with the city attorney, and Mr. City Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think I need to make the findings on this. Am I right?
Mr. City Attorney? Question to you, Mr. City Attorney, the findings?
It would be more appropriate in this case for the maker of the motion to state the findings on this matter.
Very well. Ms. Perry?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am asking my colleagues to support me in making the findings on a project that has been pending for quite some time in the Arts District. It is a project that will bring much-needed affordable housing and a retail component to the Arts District, and the site itself is Santa Fe Avenue at the First Street Bridge. The reason that there is a sensitivity of time on this issue today is because this is a street vacation. The vacation was initiated by the Department of Transportation. It is about to expire. There is no administrative process to extend this street vacation, which was initiated by the Department of Transportation, and there's no language written in our municipal code for an extension. Building and Safety and Engineering and other relevant city departments will all have an opportunity to review and approve this project's plans and specifications during the subsequent plan approval process, and so I'm asking you to approve the vacation today, which would waive the conditions imposed for the vacation. We have a very responsible developer, a responsible property owner. Many of the conditions have already been met pursuant to city requirement, but there are still some outstanding issues. But there is a process, again, the plan approval process, to resolve those outstanding issues.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. On the findings, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Matter is now be forced. Ms. Perry?
I mean, unless people have questions, I don't have anything further down.
No questions on the Q on the matter? On a special? Mr. Sachs, you expired your time, sir. On that matter, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Matter passed. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Council has motions for posting referral?
Post and refer.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? No announcements? Mr. Parks?
Yes, I have two announcements. I would like to invite the public to the, an event at the African-American Museum to honor the National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. It's put on by our local NAMI, Urban L.A. It's tomorrow, 6:00 to 8:30 at the Exposition Park, African-American Museum. The other issue is this Saturday, we'd like to invite the public to a joint effort on health with... health with the Cedar Cyanide Hospital, in conjunction with Numero Uno Market, at 97th and Figueroa, they'll be bringing out a variety of health care needs for the community, particularly related to youth.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, Mr. Cardenas, any special?
I have one more.
Any, I understand that. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
August third is the, what is it, the annual night out, so advise the public, there's a variety of events citywide on National Night Out, August third.
Many of the police divisions will be having events in their specific divisions, no other announcements, adjourned motions, please stand for adjourned motions, we'll start the request, Mr. Wesson, adjourned motions, please stand in the audience, stand, thank you, adjourned motion, Mr. Wesson.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and members, this is a very bittersweet moment for me, and for my colleagues who had the opportunity to serve in the state legislature, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Carets, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Alakon, and myself, we rise to adjourn in memory of a fine and very decent man, Senator Dave Cox. Dave was seventy-two years old. Dave and I entered the legislature at the same time. Two guys that really have nothing in common, other than their love for hot dogs. He would take me to a place called The Winery, where we would get hot dogs, but he was from, we would joke, he was from the small town of Holdenville, Oklahoma, and I was the flashy urban knight from Los Angeles. But, it was a very unique time for the Republican members of the legislature. When I was there, they had like four leaders in three years, and Mr. Cox, I want to say a few days after he became the Republican leader, he came up to me, because I was putting my votes together to become the next speaker, and he said, I have thirty Republican votes for you, the minute that you want them, you have them. And, we really didn't even know each other, but over time, we tried to focus, we were probably one of the last semi-functional legislatures, because what he and I attempted to do was to focus on the things that we had in common, and not on the philosophical differences that we could never, ever agree on, so we focused on our love and respect for the legislature, our love of country and state, and we were able to accomplish some things. I am a better person, because I met him and his wife Maggie Cox. I'd just like to share two quick stories with you. The first one is, when, my first year, I was invited to the Academy Awards, I'd never been before, as the Speaker of the House. He was invited as the Republican leader, so I figured that I would just kind of blow his mind, so I got these two black limo-type cars, and I had a security detail with the CHP. So, he met me at my house, where the CHP were on the four motorcycles, they escorted us to, I mean, to the red carpet. You know, even the Stars had to walk further to get to the red carpet than we did, and when we got out, everybody was cheering and clapping, and he was said to me, boy, your constituents really love you. I said, no, they think we're somebody, act like we're somebody, and we start waving and blowing kisses, and you could see the lips saying, who are those guys, I know? And I said, well, see, they probably think I'm Denzel Washington, and you're Winford Brimley, or somebody like that. The last story, I mean, it just really made, made his day, and Maggie's, his wife's day. And the last story is, the last year, we were in a budget crisis, as usual, thirty-eight billion dollar budget shortfall, and the Republican members said, under no circumstances will we increase taxes. And we tried to see what we could do, but it was impossible, so we worked on a plan to pass the budget with no taxes, and I think Mr. Carets was still there, it was his second year, I think, and, and Richard was in the Senate, so we came up with a budget with no taxes. I go to Dave, I tell him, Dave, this is what you wanted. Dave said, great. He was the only Republican to vote for it, so he got ticked off, so he came into my office, and he said, boy, I just, I don't know what to do, and I said, well, let's do this. I said, why don't we lock everybody in the assembly chambers, and the only person that I'll let leave to go to their office is you. So, we kept everybody locked up, and unfortunately, Mr. Carets was losing a little money in a game of chance, and people were eating pizza, and in my office, and in Dave Cox's office, I had catered in a nice steak dinner, and he and I sat and waited for hours, and I remember about five hours into it, he comes up to me, and he says, it's working. Twenty-nine and a half hours later, we agreed on a budget, where the Republicans increased our budget, the spending, by three-hundred-and-fifty million, go figure, but he was a good man, would come and see me every day, and I can remember one day, he said, you know, every time I go into caucus, I walk in as the Republican leader, but I don't know if, when I walk out, I'm going to be the Republican leader. And I said, every time, Dave, that I walk into our caucus, I know I'm the speaker, and wish I wouldn't be when I walked out, so, he was a good guy, and, and I just thought, since we do have a strong Sacramento connection, that I would take just a few extra minutes to talk about a guy who was a very dear, dear friend of mine.
Thank you. Mr., any other comments on, all members, Mr. Krikorian?
Oh, let me just say, I do want, this, Mr. Alakon will sign this, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Carets, Mr. Krikorian, and myself, and then, if we could have everybody else on it.
Yes, those are council members, and then all council. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, and I'd like to second the motion adjourned in memory of Senator Cox. I think, in two terms in the legislature, I may have gotten one vote out of Dave Cox, maybe. He was a person who, who probably didn't share a lot with me politically, but he was somebody who was deeply devoted to the quality of the policy that we created in Sacramento, and if you went into a hearing that Dave Cox was involved with, with a proposal, you had better have done your homework, and he was somebody who asked the right questions, who voted based on the, the policy, and not the bumper sticker description of the policy. He was somebody who was, was very much committed to ensuring that, that what we did in Sacramento had the effect that we intended it to have, and I think he was, in that respect, kind of an old-fashioned legislator that, that we need more of, so it's, it's a great honor for me to join you, Mr. Wesson, in, in seconding your motion adjourned, although I have to say, I will take with me for many years, your description of Dave Cox on a red carpet blowing kisses. I don't think that's something I ever could have imagined if you hadn't said, said that it was so. It's a, it's a privilege to join you in this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carets.
I think everything has already been pretty well said, I would just say that, I, I agree, he was the last Republican able to keep us in a somewhat collaborative relationship, and that was because of his personal qualities and his efforts. Unfortunately, Sacramento has become even more dysfunctional since, but we were able to keep it less so through his efforts, and we need to see people like that again, to bring us back to, to that more collaborative time. I think Mr. Krikorian probably got one vote more than I did for Mr. Cox, I think he probably literally voted for zero of my bills, but nonetheless, I had tremendous respect for him, a man of high integrity, and, and someone who cared a lot about the state of California.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon, and Mr. Cardenas.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but, since I was the only one that served with him in the Senate, I'd better say anything. Dave Cox was an honorable man, and he was, he was an old-fashioned politician, to the extent that he believed in, in a fervent debate, but always with respect, and plenty of passion, and at the end of the day, the votes landed where they landed. Yes, I think I got fewer votes than even you, Mr. Carets, but, for Mr. Cox, but I can always tell you that he was, he was a pleasure to be around, a very nice man, and having served with him those years, you know, sometimes you, you wonder, and I know it's ironic that I'm saying this, with some of the challenges we faced, but, but the discussions and debates in and around the legislature were always enhanced because of people like Dave Cox. He was, as I said, he was a very honorable person who believed in democracy, and, as we do, but that, that allowed the, the debate to, to occur in a respectable manner, as sometimes, in today's reality, it, it doesn't occur, and so, so I want to pay my respects to somebody who was a gentleman, a kind-hearted person, a dedicated family member, and somebody who loved the American democracy.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, I had the honor and the pleasure of serving with Dave Cox, and yes, I was representative as a Democrat, and he's a Republican, and I did get a, a large handful of votes out of Dave Cox for some of my legislation, but the one thing that I would like to say, that he was a true gentleman, and he was someone who, even if he disagreed with you, a second later, you could have a cordial conversation with him, because he didn't make it personal, and he certainly didn't appreciate people who acted as such, making things personal. Yes, it's important, but it doesn't have to be personal, so I just want to say that he was, in fact, a gentleman, and I knew him, and I'm glad I did, thank you.
Thank you, Dave Cox, may he rest in peace. Mr. Rosenthal?
I used to have him on my television show, and he was a class act from beginning to end on the shows, he, he had a good soul and a good spirit, and that's what makes the democracy work, with people like him, may he rest in peace.
May he rest in peace. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? So you know the adjourned motions, this concludes this meeting of the City Council, Mr. Clerk, please...